Mayor Schlatter.
Here.
Mayor Protem Ryden.
Here.
Councilmember Barr.
Here.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Here.
Councilmember Grove.
Here.
Councilmember Milliman.
Here.
Councilmember Valdez.
President.
That still sounds weird. We have a quorum.
All right, rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Everyone's had a chance to look at the agenda. Are there any changes or objections? Nope, all right, it's approved. All right, now is the time for reports. I'm going to move into the City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, no report this evening, thank you.
City Attorney?
No report, Mayor, thank you.
All right, council members, I'm going to start with Mr. Driscoll.
No report, thanks.
Ms. Milliman?
Hello, good evening, everybody. First off, I want to welcome all the new council members. Congratulations and welcome aboard, and to the existing council members. Glad that we're all back together here again in December. I wanted to let you get the newer members. No, I'm sure you already know this, I am liaison to the South Metro Housing Options, which is our housing authority. And this is a really good group of folks that are working on tackling challenging housing issues that our city is facing and will continue to face. We meet once a month, and as a part of, in this housing task force, I must say, over the last two years that I've been on council, has done, the housing authority, has done an excellent job and working really well with the city staff, and so I'm looking forward to, over the next two years, to see what other accomplishments we can grasp. One of the things I wanted to share, as part of the housing authority, is we do have a reading club. I cannot see with these glasses on, they keep fogging up. We have a reading club, and we've been reading some very excellent books. I have copies of these books for anybody, if anybody's interested on council, to read them. Evicted, The Call of Law, Golden Gates, currently I'm reading Urban Crisis. And these are all great books that give you a really good substantial history of the housing crisis here in our nation, as well as in our, in our community. As a part of that, I do get a magazine called On Common Ground. It comes to us twice a year. It's put out, it's put out by the National Association of Realtors. If any of you are interested in receiving this magazine, I would highly suggest that you read it, and just let me know, and I can help you get copies of this magazine. There's a really great article this month about, it's titled "The Silver Tsunami," and it talks about the growing numbers of our aging population and the housing challenges that they're facing, our seniors are facing. As a part of the BBC 2017 housing study that was commissioned by the City of Littleton, that study suggested that we put together a housing task force, which we have. The Housing Task Force meets once a month. This is a great group of individuals, it's a multi-disciplinary group of Littleton residents and citizens who work on, excuse me, I cannot see, they keep fogging up, to help the city staff and the council better understand housing needs and goals. Currently, they're seeking Housing Task Force members, new members to join, so it was in the Littleton Report. If you are interested in becoming a member, please go to the email address that was listed in that article, and that's it.
Councilmember Valdez?
Thank you, Mayor. The only report I have is that boards and commissions' applications are being accepted, I believe, right now to the city clerk. We have plenty of vacancies, and please consider applying. Thank you, that's it.
Councilmember Barr?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say how honored I am to be up here and as this kind of first official meeting, so it's really exciting. I also did want to take a chance to report out on the Next Generation Advisory Committee. They met with, for their general meeting last week, and they are currently working on a white paper and a series of narratives from the Next Generation Committee members on housing and housing affordability, and kind of a personalization of their experiences with housing, and the wonders that they've kind of had of becoming homeowners in Littleton, as well as some of the challenges that they face as homeowners, as they have growing families. So, I'm excited to work with them as their liaison in the coming years. And yeah, that's kind of their progress so far, and we're hoping to see that white paper by the end of the year.
Thank you. Councilmember Grove?
Yes, two things. Had the opportunity to attend the Candlelight Walk and Parade and Tree Lighting Ceremony the day after Thanksgiving. There was a wonderful turnout, Santa came, it was a warm night, so people were there. So, I encourage you to put it on your list for next year, as long as we're able to have it with COVID and everything going on. It's a wonderful, wonderful event for families, and then you can stay afterwards and have a drink or something to eat at one of the downtown restaurants. So, that was a wonderful thing, and think about it again for next year. Second thing I was able to attend, and some of my fellow council members were there, was the Littleton Academy put on the Nutcracker, and it was a very professional performance, and I highly encourage you to support our local arts, and they do have more performances later on this month, and if you go to littletonyouthballet.com, I'm sure you'll be able to get tickets. That's it.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Nothing yet, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I just have a few things. First, I just want everyone to remember and acknowledge that today is Pearl Harbor Day. Eighty years ago today was the attack on Pearl Harbor, where 2,403 Americans died in that attack. I just want us to remember that, not forget that, even though it was a long time ago now. Next, in slightly better news, it's not necessarily new news, but I just wanted to congratulate Littleton's very own Carboy Winery for winning the Best in Show in the Governor's Cup Wine Competition that was held back in September, and the awards were a few weeks ago, so I just wanted to give them a shout out. I attended the Next Generation Advisory Committee meeting last week. I just wanted to touch base with them and make sure communication channels are open, introduce myself, so that meeting went well. I attended the Arapahoe County Commissioners, Mayors, and City Managers Meeting last Friday. It was in Aurora. There was a presentation on the Aurora Youth Violence Prevention Program. They introduced the new Executive Director to Centennial Airport, and then there was an update about Arapahoe County is working on figuring out how the Health Department is going to work now that Douglas County has left and Adams County has also voted. So, there is, that's very complex moving forward, and then I just wanted to remind the rest of council that we have a study session immediately following this regular meeting, and then next week, we have a special meeting, so we can go do an executive session to discuss some topics, and we will have additional council training as well. That's all I have. Next on the agenda is the citizen appearances, where there are none, but we have moved into public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for citizens to express opinions or ask questions regarding issues that are not part of public hearing tonight's agenda. Each person will have up to three minutes to speak. City Council is not authorized, under the Colorado Open Meetings Law, to take action at this meeting and any issue raised during public comment that is not part of tonight's agenda. I may refer matters to the City Manager and/or City Attorney for immediate comment after public comment, or to staff to obtain additional information and report back to council as appropriate. We expect comments to be civil. Disrespectful and disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. When you reach the podium, please clearly state your name and address into the microphone. First up, we have Rick Cronenberger.
Good evening, Mayor and Littleton City Council. It's nice to see everybody here in this new year for the council. I am Rick Cronenberger, 5796 South Lakewood Street, and a board member of Littleton, Historic Littleton, Inc. Let me get this presentation up. Okay, good, okay. Historic Littleton, Inc. has been advocating for historic preservation, Littleton's heritage for over thirty years. It began in 1990 as the Second Century Fund to restore and preserve Littleton's historic buildings over the next 100 years. The Second Century Fund was instrumental in developing a strategic plan for Main Street, saving Geneva Lodge from destruction, and establishing a national register of historic district in downtown Littleton. After 2000, we changed our name to Historic Littleton, Inc., a membership nonprofit. Our accomplishments are numerous, and you can read all about them on our website, if you have time to do that. Our goals are, first, to educate about historic preservation through programs and tours, advocate for historic preservation projects, influence public policy on preservation issues, and combine resources with other historical organizations for effective advocacy. Promoting preservation can be challenging at times. People have all sorts of concerns and issues and opinions about historic preservation. How do I advance it? I don't see it.
Let me get you going.
There we go, okay. All right. Sometimes, you must think way outside the box to bring a positive attention to promoting historic preservation in our cultural heritage. You want to do something that is purely fun. You want to look for something that almost everybody can relate to. And what better way than through one's pet? I now, I'm going to now introduce Board Member Catherine Roxborough, who conceived of and implemented one of Historic Littleton, Inc.'s most successful and far-reaching historic preservation advocacy activities in recent years, the honorary mayor, Dog Mayor 2001 election, okay?
Thank you. Next up is Catherine Roxborough.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council Members. Again, my name is Catherine Roxborough, and I am a board member of Historic Littleton, Inc. For the record, my address is 7753 South Nevada Drive. I am here this evening to announce the results of Littleton's honorary Dog Mayor election, which many of you have, oops, may be aware, has been hosted by Historic Littleton, Inc. Following a nomination process that took place in November, we named ten K-9 candidates, which are featured here on the screen. The voting took place over the past two weeks and concluded at 12:00 PM today. I am happy to report that we received a total of 6,138 votes across all of our candidates. So, without further ado, I am now pleased to announce our winner, who received 2,495 votes. Congratulations to Murdoch, a five-year-old basset hound, and Littleton's first honorary Dog Mayor. Coming in second place, with 2,194 votes, is Nettie, a French Bulldog. Nettie will serve as the honorary Dog Mayor Protem. So, what's next? The formal barking in ceremony is tentatively scheduled for Tuesday, January 18th. The Dog Mayor will serve a two-year term that coincides with the City of Littleton's council elections, and you can look forward to seeing the Dog Mayor at tours and special events. We welcome comments and suggestions from our community, so feel free to reach out to us through our website at H L I N C dot org. On behalf of Historic Littleton, Inc., I would like to thank everyone for their participation and support. We look forward to continuing to promote the City of Littleton and historic preservation through our newly-elected Dog Mayor.
Thank you. What a fun program. I'm looking forward to meeting the furry Dog Mayor and Dog Mayor Protem. Next on the list is Frank Atwood.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Frank Atwood. I live in District Four, and my street address is 7094 South Castilla Street, and I drive the Inconspicuous Approval Voting minivan. The, you may be aware that the Depot Art Center uses approval voting for their popular choice, and I regret that I wasn't able to talk to Historical Littleton, Inc. to encourage them to be using approval voting. I'm here again advocating for approval voting, especially for City Council, to use it to elect board and commission members. We've been told a picture is worth a thousand words, and so I hope that when you look at this graph, you're overcome by, although the public cannot see the graph, the caption reads, "This chart shows upwardly trending popular discontent with two parties over the past nearly two decades." I recognize that City Council is nonpartisan, but I think we, when we discover factionalism, we'll realize that approval voting is a solution for that. This is two decades, not just the recent presidencies such as President Obama, Trump, or Biden. This is since Second Bush Administration, almost two full decades. With regards to council using approval voting for boards and commission elections member, Councilmember Driscoll, yes, approval voting is being used in Fargo, North Dakota, and St. Louis, Missouri. Councilmember Valdez, thank you for discussing approval voting with me and understanding it. Councilmember Grove, thank you for understanding how approval voting works, and Councilmember Barr, I look forward to hear from you, and City Clerk Norton, what codification may be involved or restricted uses of alternative voting methods by city councils to elect boards and commissions? The three remaining council members, I look forward to discussing approval voting with you, and especially after you read this card. Voters want to express themselves beyond just two-party thinking, and your using approval voting to elect boards and commissions will give each of you that opportunity also. Again, my phone number is 720-260-1493, and I may be too eager to discuss approval voting with each of you, but I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no one else signed up on the list here? Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Come on down.
Good evening, Council. My name is Pam Chubb. I'm in the block an hour from here. I'm concerned, and I think I've mentioned this at your first meeting, about the process that has been used by the City Manager, City Council, form of government for the past couple, three years. And I think what I expressed is that it's not based on data and information and discussion of everyone about that data and those facts and how they fit our goals and objectives. Instead, I think we've gotten off track. We are definitely on a track, but it's a bad track and an off-track because it is based on authority. Who's the boss of me is kind of the principle. Council hires three people, and so the City Manager says whatever council wants, and right there, that's a break. The City Manager has an obligation to us all, to the city, as well as to you, to bring facts and data about the issues that are up before all of us. I'm going to say that decisions made without facts or data are flawed. Almost by definition, and most of the time, they're wrong. At least they run a huge risk of being wrong. And we cannot discuss them coherently, because there are no facts. We get into who's got the most influence behind the scenes, whose opinion is strongest, who's been here longest. This is not the way to govern, I believe. It is, I think, not what the founders and framers envisioned. When we talk about the marketplace of ideas, that's based on facts and data. So, I'd like you, when staff brings nothing to you, and says, "What do you want?", say, "We aren't going to consider that until you bring us these kinds of data about this kind of choice. Where's it been done before? What were the results? How long did it take to accomplish? What did it cost? What are the risks? What were the mitigations of those risks, where it was used and applied?" And then all of us can start to talk meaningfully about what that choice is, and we can compare it to what we think Littleton needs to be, what our goals and objectives are. That's what we need, and that's what we haven't been doing. And Council, I'm going to ask you, please, from now on, insist on data. Don't just express opinions when you make choices. Finally, yes, I did want to acknowledge this is the eightieth anniversary of Pearl Harbor, and I wanted to just remember all of the people who were involved in that, most of whom are gone now, but I thank them for their service. Where we live now is thanks to them.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Seeing no one, we will move on to Item Seven, which is... Does the City Manager or City Attorney have any response?
No comment this evening, Mayor.
No response, thank you, Mayor. All right. We'll move on to Item Seven, which is the Consent Agenda Items. Consent Agenda Items can be adopted by a simple motion. All ordinances must be read by title prior to a vote on the motion. Any consent agenda item may be removed at the request of a council member. We have six items tonight. A, Resolution 572021, approving the Canal Collaborative Memorandum of Understanding. B, Resolution 532021, approving the renewal of an intergovernmental agreement with Arapahoe County for usage of their fiber optic network. C, Resolution 542021, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Littleton, Colorado Department of Transportation for reimbursement of costs associated with the replacement of the South Windermere Street over Highline Canal Bridge. D, Ordinance 312021, an ordinance on first reading, amending Ordinance 27 Series 2021, known as the Annual Appropriation Bill for all municipal purposes of the City of Littleton, counties of Arapahoe, Douglas, and Jefferson, State of Colorado, for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2022, and ending December 31st, 2022. E, ID 21253, a motion to approve the 2021-2023 council liaisons to boards and commissions and additional outside appointments. And F, ID 21250, motion to approve the minutes of the November 16th, 2021, regular meeting. I have a motion?
Mayor, a move to approve Consent Agenda Items A through F.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We ready to vote? What's going on here? I hit open? There we go. A little delay there, all right. Okay, you got it? I think you... There it goes. All right.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Item Eight is general business, of which there is none. Item Nine is ordinances on second reading and a public hearing. We have ordinance 2021, an ordinance on first reading, amending Title III, Chapter Nine of the City Code relating to retail sales and use tax.
And Mayor, that should be an ordinance on second reading, my apologies.
Sorry, on second reading. To turn it over to the City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to immediately turn it over to the City Attorney, who's going to make the presentation on this.
Thank you, and I'll try to be brief. Obviously, this council is well aware that back in August, the previous council voted in favor of submitting a ballot issue to the registered electors of the City of Littleton, whereby the city's sales tax would be increased from 3% to 3.75%. Obviously, the history behind that is our sales tax had not been raised in over fifty years, and the city took great lengths in identifying a number of the critical capital infrastructure projects that have been unfunded. The city went to great lengths to show the dire straits that our general fund was in, in terms of eventually running out of surplus money to be able to handle those needs. So, that was submitted to the registered electors. On November 2nd, the registered electors voted to approve 3A by a vote of about 59% to 41%, so that item passed. So, the item before you tonight is essentially going through our existing sales tax ordinances and replacing everything that said 3.0% to 3.75%. So, that is what is before you tonight. There is a need to have this done before January 1st, to meet the deadline the state has, so if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer any. We are hoping that the additional sales tax could bring in approximately $10 million, and those monies are earmarked to go towards some of our capital infrastructure needs going forward. So, that concludes my presentation.
Anyone have any questions for the City Attorney? Okay, does anyone have a motion to approve?
Mayor, this is a public hearing, so we'll have to open and see if anyone wants to speak.
All right, time is 6:57, so I'll open the public hearing.
There is no one signed up.
No one signed up. Anyone wish to speak? Frank?
Good evening, City Council.
Good evening, city council. As you know, with this ordinance of raising the taxes, there was some mention of some committee that would be formed in order to oversee this additional tax revenue. And I'm nominating myself as a representative of the 41% that did not vote against, that voted against it, in the interest of diversity and equity, to be a member of that committee. So I look forward to serving on that committee. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak? Seeing no one, I will close the public comment at 6:58. I just had one question for the city attorney. Is this vote has, is not related to the group that's being formed? This is just a cleanup in the charter with the three to three and three quarters, correct?
That is correct. That's just changing to 3.75. As we go forward, Mr. Attwood is correct. We will form an independent board to monitor those expenses, as well as annual reports to show where those monies are going towards and where they've gone. And I think perhaps the city manager has some more eloquent ideas on that.
Well, I think we'll share those eloquent ideas at the council retreat in the middle of February, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor and council. Yeah, staff is keenly aware of the requirements that we suggested and recommended to the council for the ballot issue regarding this committee. So staff is working through that process now, and we'll have a proposal here mid-February for you.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Yeah, I do, ma'am. And to the city manager, maybe even to the city attorney. At some point, I would like counsel maybe to consider, or at least to discuss, in the not-too-distant future, a possible sunsetting of a portion of this increase. And when I say sunsetting, I'm looking at 15 years away, or something after a bonding has taken place and has possibly paid off. But if we could put that on our agenda for that to take place.
Councilmember, I'd be happy to. I think the retreat might be a good idea, or at least in time for that discussion. Staff is also going to be discussing the possibility of a bond issue related to the 3A issue. So we could wrap all this up in a conversation at the retreat. Okay.
Anybody like to make a motion now?
Mayor, I'll make a motion. I'd like to approve ordinance 30-2021, an ordinance on first reading amending Title III, Chapter Nine of the City Code relating to retail sales and use tax.
Second. Again, a correction. It's on second reading. Thank you. Second.
Is there any discussion or debate amongst ourselves? Seeing none, city clerk, would you please read back the motion?
Councilmember Driscoll moved, and councilmember Grove seconded to approve ordinance 30-2021 on second reading, amending Title III, Chapter Nine of the City Code relating to retail sales and use tax.
Everyone ready to vote? Vote for is voting for the change, a vote against is not approving the change. Seems to be a delay on this thing. There it goes. All right, there we go.
This microphone is not good. The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. All right, let's see, where are we here? That's now we're done with everything in our meeting here, so we will adjourn the regular meeting. And then do we, does anyone need a small break before we go into study session?
Mr. Mayor, could I just suggest a five-minute break?
Five minutes?
While staff just realigns the tables here and gets ready for the orientation.
Certainly. All right, we'll reconvene at 7:07 for the study session.
Mayor, I'm going to leave since I've been through orientation before.
We're adjourned. Open this study session here. Turn it over to city manager.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, I'm just going to start with an email that I had sent to council on Friday regarding the ARPA, the federal funds here. And I just want to check in. I had made a recommendation for us to look at three specific issues here for kind of emergency use of the ARPA funds. Just stepping back here, you know, we've obviously been awarded about $12 million from the federal government here for us to implement into our city for basically recovery, both for the city and our business community and the community at large. We've kind of held back on that, as most cities have, in large part because we were still worried, working on definitions from the U.S. Treasury Department. At the same time, we had our ballot issue 3A going on. And depending on the outcome of 3A, the council then would have to, in my opinion, probably respond differently. So for example, if 3A did not pass, then it was likely that ARPA would be used for us to scale down services to meet our budget beyond the federal funds. Now that 3A has passed, there's a lot more flexibility for the city council on how they want to allocate this for the recovery of our community. So that's great news, obviously. So in this particular request, the council back in August here of this past year, they went ahead and over-appropriated to the tune of about 1.5 million of federal funds. However, they identified only about half of that in specific projects. Now, the council did that on purpose. We knew that we were likely to have some other emergency uses for ARPA funds for the balance of the year. And so this request is basically that emergency use. So we, now that we are just looking here to work with council here in the coming months to how we're going to allocate not only 3A, but the ARPA funds themselves, staff is looking at a few issues that we just have to address here before the end of the year. One of which is the continuation of a IT customer service specialist. It's highlighted in the memo. We've had a contract with an employee here, and we just need to continue that through the balance of next year, or just too reliant on this particular person in IT. We've gone through a huge transformation in the IT department as we've kind of scaled up to meet the demand through COVID and all of the services and programs that IT had to do that we just didn't exist before. And so that's an emergency service here that we need. We've also, we've listed a customer service agent in that request. We have somebody who's down at the front gate of the city hall here, who basically manages access as a result of COVID. That full-time employee is somebody we'd like to bring up into the HR department because we're having a real difficult time in the recruitment of positions here at the city. So the city is not immune to the Great Recession, or the Great, what do they call it? Resignation, excuse me. The Great Recession, we already had one of those. We'll skip another one. But the Great Resignation. And so we've had a very difficult time trying to fill a lot of positions here, and we just need the admin support. We've got existing staff that are working 50, 60 hours a week, and that's got to come to a stop. So this request would move that person up to free up some admin support, and then we'd contract with somebody to kind of manage the front entrance of this building here for the next several months, and hoping that COVID at some point in time here, obviously, is much less than what we are seeing here today.
Mark, we've always had someone at the front desk. Is this, this isn't a new position, is it?
Well...
We've always had somebody there.
We have, but with just based on the staffing changes that we had to make as a result of COVID, we had to shuffle some bodies around, and some people we had to let go just because, you know, the lack of revenue at the moment. So yes, that person has, in time, been there before, but we've shuffled who was doing the work. We have HR there currently who was doing that, but now we're having to bring that person upstairs. The last piece has to do with IT security services here. And just in order for us to maintain this, our security insurance, we have to have this kind of two-step process here. All of us are very common with that anymore with our systems here. And so we've got to put this in place here. And that's a piece that just has to get done, or we're going to lose our insurance here in case we have a data breach. So that truly is an emergency that we have to address. Council is well aware, we've had this discussion for well over a year, just the lack of security systems in our IT and our whole approach there. So this is just a way for us to plug that gap here for the short term. Also, I laid out for council here that now that 3A has passed, and that we have some more idea of where we're at with our sales tax revenue in total, I did add an additional study session in January for us to come back and start talking with council about how we're going to prioritize the ARPA funds. And then again, at the retreat, is probably one of the bigger opportunities for staff to make some proposals for your goals and see how that lines up. A third opportunity is going to be the end of February, and that's probably reconciling, you know, your retreat with a lot of the revenue discussion. Well, we're not going to be done at the end of February with ARPA. So no doubt, you're going to be probably having a discussion in May before the staff begins their real detailed conversations about the preparation of the 2023 budget. And so we're going to, once again, come back to council, show you where the projection is on sales tax, because again, we're not out of COVID. We are still in a recovery. And so our revenue is not quite where we would like it to be, or at least we can't forecast with confidence that it's going to stay where it's at, let me say it that way. The other detail that I know the council is fully aware of, we're not fully staffed. We've made cuts in the last 18 months, and we're still not at full staffing. So we are still having to struggle with trying to meet some of the demands of service. So for the next several months, the ARPA funds with council, we'll start to step into that conversation to prioritize that. So that's a very long description, but I just wanted to check in and see if council has any questions or concerns about at least the three items that were identified for emergency use.
Anybody have any questions? I think we're good.
Okay, thank you. And again, because we've already over-appropriated, we don't need a formal action here, I just need consent. So thank you, council. Appreciate that.
Right. What was that? Yeah, Jerry has a question.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, ma'am. So regarding the Citizen Oversight Committee that we're going to be putting together, when does that take place? And that's going to take staff time as well, I presume, in being shorthanded. How, what's our plan for that? What's our timeframe?
Well, yeah, it's, we have a leadership team retreat in two weeks. And so we have a list of items that the staff has identified that we're going to work through. This is one of them. We recognize that we are required by the outcome of a ballot for, you know, council to appoint a committee. And so there has been some discussion about some options about what that could be. And so as we, as in the leadership team, look at the council goals, we're trying to understand what is the capacity of this organization? Who can do what, in essence? As you know, we've been stretched really thin for the last several years, and especially through COVID. So the capacity of this organization has really been a struggle. And so this time, when we come to council in February, we're going to be sharing with you what we believe the staff can actually handle with the current staffing. And so how are we going to support things like this committee? We've had conversations about other committees in the past, Transportation Mobility Board being one of them, where we thought that might be an opportunity for that group to manage the responsibilities of 3A. That still may be option. We will present that, the pros and cons of that, but we're going to bring another option as well. So that will be in mid-February.
Anything else on that? Nope.
Okay, so if I may, Mr. Mayor and council, I'm going to jump into the orientation. So those who were looking to perhaps leave of council?
Just need to have four stay for a quorum here, so. I know there were a few that had other things to do and had sat through the orientation recently.
So staff is, all of us in the leadership team are here this evening, and also included is Judge Feldman, who's going to be speaking here in a few minutes as well. And we're going to be covering kind of a series of topics here that, from a staff perspective, we believe is for the oncoming council here, they probably need a little deeper understanding of some of these goals and objectives here. You know, obviously, there's a lot to understand here when you step into this position here. So this is not intended for you to learn all things about all departments, and so this is trying to give you kind of a higher level. We welcome the opportunity, if council has interest in meeting with individual department directors, if you want to learn more about public works, police, finance, whatever it might be. And so we'd be more than happy to schedule the time with you if you have that interest. And so this is an opportunity for us to just kind of weave this all together and give you some broad overview here. All right, so myself, Reed, Kathleen, and Sam here, we're the ones that are going to be kind of guiding some of this conversation, and we have the rest of the leadership team here waiting in the back pews like it was church. You know, I don't really want this to be all that real formal here. I think this is an opportunity to be more conversational about it. Yes, we have a PowerPoint, we have some issues that we'd like to share with all of council. I think this is an opportunity for you to ask a lot of questions. It looks a little similar to perhaps the candidate forum that we had here, you know, during the election process. But really, now that you have been elected, this is really for us to kind of start to dig into some of these issues at a larger scale here. Obviously, again, the council, the staff's going to be working at the leadership retreat here in a couple of weeks, and then your own retreat here mid-February, where you're really going to be diving into the council goals to reaffirm what is the direction you want to provide staff? What's the objective? And then we'll discuss action steps, both at the retreat and later in time. So let's see, of course, you know, the very broad, we started in 1890. So this city has obviously been around a long time here in the Denver metro area. It is a home rule city. The charter was developed in 1959. It is a city manager form of government. And so there is in our charter, very specific language about that. In part of your orientation binder, we've given you some additional material that you can read at your leisure here, supplied by different organizations to help you understand kind of the purpose of a city manager form of government. In essence, the city council is hiring three professionals to run the city, myself as the city manager, Reed as the city attorney, and Judge Feldman as our municipal judge. So those are your three appointees. In the case of the city manager, you know, I basically take the direction from city council, I implement your direction, and then I report back on our progress. So I'm, in essence, the one who's kind of pushing forward your agenda. My, let's see, can you go back just for a second there, please? Okay, so the governance documents there, some are listed, I know there's plenty of reading material that's listed there. Okay, thank you. Okay, so authority boards and commissions, currently, we do have 11 boards. You know, based on my experience, I'd say that's probably average for a city our size. Sometimes I've seen more, sometimes I've seen less. There are five that we consider quasi-judicial. Next week, we're going to be having some very specific training around what quasi-judicial means and kind of the responsibility specifically for city council. And Reed Betzing here, our city attorney, is going to dive into that here next week. I think, as one of the council members here mentioned, we do have some vacancies currently in some of that, but we do have the application process that began here in December. And if you look at the council's tentative calendar, that is on the webpage under city meetings, and you'll see that it is something that we keep up to date pretty regularly. In fact, this is available to the entire public, so they can see the changes that we make in a given day and immediately show up on the tentative calendar. But the intent of that, of course, is for us to work with the mayor and the mayor pro tem, at least in the beginning here, to kind of lay out what we believe are the issues in time that we need to take on. There'll be opportunities for all of city council, quite honestly, if you have interest in pursuing something that you do not see on there, to either raise it during a, like a retreat, or certainly your protocols, we'll talk about the ability of two or more council members in a formal process to kind of flag an issue for council discussion and try to decide you want to put it up on the agenda. You know, just from my own personal perspective, I work with the mayor pretty regularly to try to make sure that I'm meeting the intent of all of council. What I, whatever information that is generated for one council member, I work hard to make sure all council members get that communication. I think it's important that we even the communication among all council when it comes to important issues like this. So at times, you'll see that I'll respond to a particular individual council member, and just because we've been talking about it in the past, I'll just send it to all of council, just as an FYI.
I'd like to point out to all of council that, I really appreciate you doing that, because that isn't something that didn't happen a few years back. It wasn't happening until you took the role on, and then you've made it happen to make sure that if I'm talking about something and you're going to provide me information that, you know, all council members have that same information, so they're not kind of blindsided at some point.
Yeah.
I really appreciate, as well as the city attorney, even Reed has done a great job.
Yes, yes.
Not, and I could even bring up the chief of police, but I won't go there.
Well, I wouldn't know if I'd go that far, council member, but-
Yeah, that might be going too far.
You know, I think this is something I know that I've shared before with all of council, but I think it's something that we were trying to put in place here and live this leadership framework. And it's to remind us that we do have a sense of purpose and a cycle in time of how we kind of manage this community. And so in the middle of all of this is the vision, values, and the mission of this organization. That is something that had been missing when I came here. And so we've been working hard to try to define that with the employees. In essence, this is things, you know, like customer service as an example. This is what drives a lot of our programs and services and how we address our community needs. At the very top there, when we talk about community and city council, obviously, we've just had an election, and so you represent the community. We work with you during the retreat, and we develop a strategic plan. So what are your goals? What are the priorities of this community? We tie that to the budget, and through a process that we call priority-based budgeting, it is a way for us to align, based on the priorities of this community, what we value, and line that up with our budgeting process. And then obviously, once the council approves all this, then we move this down through the organization, through service plan and delivery, individual goals. And one of the pieces that we've been trying to put in place here and work towards is the measurement of our goals and objectives. So I'm a big advocate of what you measure is what gets done, and so we're trying to find a process here so that we can report back to council and answer the question, have we succeeded? So that's the, one of the main purposes of why we would measure something. Clearly, we look for opportunities for process improvement. And again, that's another piece that we've been trying to work on here for the last few years, and put that into the actual culture of this organization, is looking for opportunities for improvement. We've used this with council for the last several years. You know, I really like this because I think it's a visual on the interaction between the city council and certainly staff. And so as we kind of develop a strategic plan and approach here for our community, and we basically start having that conversation at the retreat itself here in mid-February, we come up with a purpose and vision that's kind of a higher elevation. And you can see at the bottom there, it kind of shows you what's the council's responsibility versus what the staff's responsibility. So in the beginning, clearly, it's the large responsibility of our city council to provide that purpose and that vision. And then as we work through the strategic goals, staff has a little bit more involvement, we prioritize, we start to plan, and then we start to shift some of this responsibility over to the staff. And I think this is a great analogy, because it is, shows kind of how this partnership between the staff and the council, we work with you to clearly understand the best we can, your purpose and vision, and your strategic goals, and we put that down into actual action. The last piece of this, I think, is real important, is the need for us to report back to the city council here periodically. So you'll see on the tentative calendar that we're going to come back two to three times a year to report basically on this process. So as we come out of the retreat, we're going to be looking for opportunities to provide that update on your goals and objectives and show you the measurement and where are we at in measuring our success. Okay, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Kathleen. I think she's got a little piece here to share about where we've been for the last few years.
Kathleen Osher, sorry, that Community Services Director, so I think it's, in some ways, the end of an era and an opportunity for us to be a little reflective. I know that Sam Fox and I had the chance to present to the International City Managers Association in October and have a chance to reflect on the pretty incredible journey that the city of Littleton has been on. As many of you know, there were pieces in terms of big goals for the city that, you know, had taken some time. We've made some attempts at them, you know, with dealing with no sales tax increase since 1970, as City Attorney Betzing mentioned earlier, and then, of course, the land use and zoning code from 1976, and a full update to our comprehensive plan from 1989. So those were some disadvantages that we were dealing with. And, you know, to start a dialogue with the community and really start to think about a process for how we can move that forward, we began this journey about five years ago and, you know, had to ask our question, that question of ourselves, where do you start with this? And the importance of really creating an emotional connection with the community and being very intentional about understanding the vision for what we termed was 2040, so a 20-year vision. In many ways, we created what unified us as a community. It was a unifying vision in 2040 that was adopted by council in 2018, and an opportunity to get on the same page as a community and measure our engagement. I think what was most important was to give the confidence to the members of city council that it was a community-driven process and was an opportunity for us to begin what then could be a very regular dialogue and conversation with the community about where we're headed on those 20, 30-year horizons. That emotional connection with the community had to start with a set of shared values. It really had to capture the hearts and minds. In many ways, it was an opportunity to be a giant set of ears for council as you were making decisions, an opportunity for us to not go out with a bunch of leading questions, but to really just sit and listen and have an opportunity for people to communicate how Littleton could grow and recognize its existing community character and take into account things like historic preservation, our incredible vibrant arts and culture, and then really set the stage for both the modern land use and zoning code, as well as the revenue needs for the city, make clear some of the challenges that we had, particularly on the capital fund side, and then this ongoing and sort of cadence for dialogue and the tools that the city would need to move forward. So that set in motion this sort of five-year plan to get back on track with a very, very focused approach. So I'm going to turn it over to Sam.
Thank you, Kathleen. So I'm Sam Fox, Assistant to the City Manager. I was actually pulled into the City Manager's office when we started making this transition to help us do these things. And so some of the things, as we reflect, we really made a focus on process over the last five years. So yes, we're still going to plan, but we're going to have an intentional process where we've listened, we've collected data, we've planned, and we put that into action. And you can see that in a lot of this progress we've made. You know, we started council work plans in 2017, having that focus and that discipline to stay connected. We started having them being two-year plans, and they're now on the city's website, so you can see those. In fact, I remember meetings with council where we looked at them, we had one printed out on the board, so we'd say, okay, we have a new priority. How do we rearrange? What comes off the plate? So we had a lot of discipline around that. We also worked to implement tools to support us down this path. So we implemented priority-based budgeting, which I'll tell you a little bit more about in a minute, to help give us a framework for how we can talk about this, how we can communicate with our community. We've got our comprehensive plan and leadership framework that have all come through in the last few years, and we've had this renewed focus on organizational culture and really carrying these pieces through. But all, through all of that, to say COVID has been difficult, I think, for every organization. This organization did not slow down during COVID. We continued, we met all of council's goals, we took on that work, and it's a big lift. And then in the last year, we've also worked on that unified land use code and passed 3A, just a significant workload over the past five years and huge accomplishments with the dedication to this process. City Manager, I feel like you're wanting to make a comment.
Sam has learned to read me pretty well, even though I had a mask on. You know, I think, just reflecting back on the council four or five years ago, I can remember a conversation, you know, certainly, Jerry, you were there, and Kyle, even subsequent conversations later in time, but the council had very specific things that they wanted done. And so we had this relationship between staff and the council trying to figure out, well, how do you make lasting change? We recognize that all of these comprehensive plans of the past, we just haven't had the ability to update them until now. So the council and the staff came together at a moment in time that I think was unique. And I do believe, and I've said this before, I'm very proud of what the council has accomplished here of late. And so we've created a comprehensive plan that is the policy direction of this community. And so there needs to be this political discipline for which we reflect on the comprehensive plan periodically, update that about every five years, and this is how you sustain change, how you manage change, is to be able to have that vision and have the political discipline to update that policy document. And I think, you know, I've certainly seen that in my career in multiple cities, but those councils, those cities who have that discipline are the ones who are best able to kind of manage the change as it comes to them. Otherwise, you're just reacting on the fly. And I think, based on what I heard from council, certainly in my time here, is that we were trying to get away from that. We wanted more discipline in our approach, more information, more data as we kind of move through time. And so I think it is the, I'd say, as Kathleen said, it is the, perhaps, the end of one era. And now with the passage of 3A, it is a very different world for us, new responsibilities, new challenges. It won't be easy, but at least the community has responded to us, and in my opinion, that vote of nearly 60% in favor is just a sound support for the council, for this organization, for us to kind of manage that change that's coming at us, what we've seen and what still is to come. And so I think it's very encouraging for us as we step into this next year, certainly at your retreat, to look at that vision and to step in and figure out what are the things that we can take on, the priorities, the change that we can accomplish here in order to meet the expectations of our community.
I'd like to piggyback off your comments and Sam's comments about everything you guys have done for the last, you know, two years. I want to, you know, commend staff for putting in a lot of hard work. I know it wasn't easy working remotely, and council for going through the last two years, you know, even from an outsider at that point in time, it was, it was obvious and clear of how hard and everyone worked and got through that. So I just want to commend each one, each and every one of you.
And I'd like to also say that 3A is not the goose that laid the golden egg here. I mean, it's going to help us a lot, but we have to be disciplined as a council with our spending. As you said, you're already, like you said, short staff or staff is overworked. I think even Reed might even be overworked to some degree, but a little bit. Yeah, when he said 50 hours, I thought that, well, we're not talking about Reed here. I think Reed puts in a lot more hours, as well as others. But I think it's been over the years, though, that this, the staff has made cuts in order for our budget. So this 3A is not a golden egg for us, that just, oh, we can go crazy and start spending. We need to maintain that discipline. I know, Kelly, you've been through this, Kyle, you've been through this, and we need to continue on that path.
Absolutely, I agree with that. You know, I think it's, again, you know, that 3A is targeted to very specific purposes here, so.
Yeah, with that in mind-
Yeah, with that in mind, maybe it's going to be at the staff or council retreat, but are you going to have a plan ready by then, like for some of our capital need requirements that are in dire need, I mean, needed it a long time ago, but now we can perhaps do something? I presume you and Public Works are working on that.
Yeah, that'll be a central theme in the leader to, leadership team retreat here in a couple of weeks is, you know, how do we, how do we manage the process for 3A? So how do we identify what are the short-term needs, medium needs, and longer-term needs? What's the prioritization process that we want to suggest to city council? Because, you know, we can't do all things all at once, and so we're going to have to understand that, that revenue stream over time, what does it provide us for options in trying to manage those expectations? So yes, we will have a process that will suggest to council at the retreat. Now, you have to understand too, though, you know, something of this magnitude is going to take a fair amount of time to kind of define. So one of the issues, for example, that we could be pursuing is a potential bond issue. So you may want to incur debt. In fact, I would highly encourage that we do that because the cost of construction is going up at a, at a rate that's much higher than inflation. And so it's just plain old financial sense to borrow money now when rates are low in order to accomplish things that a cash flow would simply just cost us more over time. So what could that be? And I think you'll certainly hear at the retreat from Public Works, and we've had this conversation for months, is if 3A does pass, we're in a great position here to kind of partner with the federal government through Dr. Cog on this infrastructure package. So what is the federal money that we can bring to this community? It may be difficult to get your, your head kind of wrapped around this here immediately, but, you know, with the 20, 80% match, so our money that we bring into these federal projects is the 20%, we're bringing in 80% more money into this community to accomplish much larger projects. Mineral in Santa Fe is one example we've talked about, but, you know, there's a whole magnitude and, and opportunities here over time that I think we're just going to have to be ready to respond to. So it's a long way to say that, yes, we will have a process that will identify for council at the retreat. It will unfold over months and perhaps even years, depending on how we approach the problem.
And, and along with our plan for our capital needs issues, the, the 12 million or thereabouts, I, I want to see as much as that go to our community in, in the way of businesses or whatever. I know you're going to come up with a plan on that, but again, that isn't something we can just take and just spend it, you know, like we're having a party or something. We have some businesses out there that are struggling, and now with more of a quasi-government shutdown with these masks and stuff, that's affecting some of these businesses again. So I'd, hopefully with the, this CARES money, we can do a lot with that to help those folks out.
Yeah, you know, I look forward to that conversation with council because, you know, the, the first, the CARES Act, the very first phase of federal money was, you know, truly trying to manage the impacts of, of COVID right then and there, you know, so the PPEs and kind of some of the basics. Now we're into the ARPA funds, which is more about business recovery. It's not so much about masks and hand sanitizer. We're beyond that. So how do we recover in this community? What does that look like? And so I think we're going to be talking through some of that at our leadership team retreat and then bringing to council some ideas about where you could target the, the ARPA funds. And there is a category specific to kind of business recovery.
Mark, I had a quick, sorry about that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. So I had a quick, I guess, request. So when we're having departments, you know, making the presentations on their, the work that they're going to be doing, expectations, plans for the coming year, I want to acknowledge that this is a huge amount of work that the city has put into all these plans and everything like that to move forward, but it takes people to move these things forward. It takes people to move and manage them, and the greater the complexity of the plan, the greater the staffing that's required to actually execute that. And so I'm hoping that as part of this orientation, we can hear from each of the individual departments a little bit about not just the impacts of COVID and the great resignation, but what it will take to build staffing back to a level that we, that we as council can then know what is possible in terms of facilitating new things. Because that, again, does, you know, we can come up with all these fanciful ideas of ways to spend ARPA money and whatnot, but unless we have people to do it, then, you know, that's never going to happen. So that was just kind of a broad request that when departments are individually speaking, kind of knowing what the delta has become over the last two years in terms of staffing and capacity would be helpful.
And I appreciate that request. In fact, that's, I think, the intent of why I've added the additional study session in January, and then we already have the February, is to start that conversation because you're absolutely correct, we can't advance this without staff. Organizations like this, you know, 80% of it is staff time, staffing, manpower. You know, we're not building widgets, we're providing services on the ground. So yeah, it's, it takes people, you know, to accomplish these goals. And so we embrace the challenge of coming back to council in January here to start sharing with you, we do need staff in order to accomplish this, and how do we do that based on the existing revenue that we've got? That's, that's the challenge at hand.
I think the floor is yours, Samma.
Thank you, Mayor. Can we go to the next slide? So we want to highlight here just the importance of connecting the dots as we work through this. And if you look at kind of the bullet points here, you can actually see the leadership framework start to move. So it's very important as we take all these initiatives on at the same time that we intentionally take a moment at each one to make sure they're lining up with everything else we're doing. So when we're talking about your council goals, we're making sure that that fits with the community vision, and then we're feeding those into priority-based budgeting. We're talking about mission, vision, values, we're making sure that feeds into how we're making our priorities as an organization. And we're continuing that effort to make sure that we're, we're measuring, we're reviewing, and we're adapting as necessary because we are in a changing, dynamic environment. Go to the next slide. I want to give you a little example of what that might look like for you. So with priority-based budgeting, as I think most of you know, this is a format of budgeting where you identify programs and services, and then talk about changes to those service levels for that service. So think about snow plowing. You're now looking at the full cost of what snow plowing looks like and what that service level agreement is when you're making these policy decisions about funding the budget rather than light items. So it helps bring it up to a story where we can communicate and a place where we can make policy-level decisions. And this is the kind of thing that you'll see as we continue connecting the dots. We'll make sure those council goals are reflected here, we'll connect our mission, vision, values here, and we'll bring you these conversations with this insight.
And this is now, what, the fourth year for?
Correct.
Yes.
Yep, and, you know, priority-based budgeting is a cultural change. It's not just a switch you can flick. It takes growth and time, and so you'll see us continue to grow and evolve this effort.
And the, and the lights are flickering now on to stay on with all the department heads with the understanding how that works?
I hope so. You can go to the next slide. So before we move into your goals, we want to give you an opportunity to hear from your council appointees and learn a little bit more about their departments. Mark?
You know, I think what I'd like to share with Reed here together is, every day Reed and I talk, and so there is this collaborative effort between the city manager's office and the city attorney's office. So we are constantly strategizing about your agenda, the issues before us. There is really very little separation between our two offices. We're, we're sitting next to each other upstairs, if you've been up there, and they got Lucy, myself, Samma, Kathleen, Reed, Ashley Augustin, all of us are on purpose together. It's because we truly are meeting every day for us to perform that strategy. So we're small offices, you know, the, I see now the city attorney's office is actually larger than mine. I didn't, how'd that happen?
I do have a vacancy.
Yes, and so I think, you know, one of the protocols here that we've put in place here with council over time is on agenda items, you know, we have this process where as you look at agenda items, the council's decided that let's submit those questions that you have to staff by noon on Mondays. The intent of this is so that staff has the opportunity to read all this in advance, share our response with you before the meeting, and so that when you come to the meeting, the council is a little more well-informed, so all of you have that information. And so we're not trying to kind of figure that out off the dais, we're trying to minimize, you know, confusion at the meeting itself, we're trying to look for ways to be more informed.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's really important because if we ask a question, you know, if staff's not prepared, you know, we don't want them fumbling around searching for it. We give them proper time to at least give us a response.
Yeah, and if for some reason we, you know, we can't get an answer, obviously, we'll just tell you, you know, it's whatever, it may take more time, we'll have to look into more detail of that, and we'll certainly raise that at the meeting itself. The other thing I just want to reinforce again is that, you know, I welcome all of council to contact department, department directors directly. You know, I think there's, you know, I've been in some organizations where a city manager will try to control that pretty tightly. I think that in this particular case, based on the culture that we've developed over time, I would encourage you to talk to department directors directly. You know, I would ask that you just simply communicate with me, just copy me with an email or whatever it might be, just so I'm aware of that. I would ask that you don't really go below the department director because a lot of staff, they don't, they don't understand how to work with a city council member. In some cases, that may be necessary, and so if we find those opportunities or needs, you know, we'll certainly work towards that to make sure you get whatever information you need. So again, as I said before, if there is some kind of written correspondence about a issue that may be somewhat significant, I do try to take that as an opportunity to share with all of council. Reed, do you want to add to that?
I, I guess the only thing I would, I would add is, you know, council has adopted some legislative rules that talk about how council is to kind of communicate with staff. So not to say that this council would ever do that, but if a particular council person seemed to be, or wanted to be critical of a particular staff person, that that goes directly to Mark and not directly to any staff person. You know, as Mark has mentioned, he's, he's in charge of running this entire city. So, you know, can we get an extra plow out here on, in front of my road on Aberdeen? Probably send that one to Mark and not send that one to Keith, so that's it.
Yeah, you know, I think maybe I'm just going to state probably the obvious, there's probably not much to be gained here if a council member is being critical of a staff member off the dais. There's going to be times when you will be disappointed for whatever reason, it just happens. And so when that does, you know, I would encourage you just to get ahold of me as, as quickly as you can, just to let me know whatever the issue was, and then I'd be more than happy to chase that down. We're not perfect, you know, we try to help council with as much information as we can based on the resources that we've got. So if you're disappointed with something, please tell me. I also try to reach out to council and schedule kind of a monthly meeting. It's a way for me to kind of connect with council just to make sure that, you know, whatever your issues are, that I'm kind of responding to them. Not all of council takes me up on that offer, sometimes it's more ad hoc. Some people are pretty regular about the monthly meeting. And so, again, I'm here to make you successful, and so I think if you have a need for whatever it is, ad hoc or on a calendar, it's fine with me. I just want to make sure that I have an opportunity to kind of work with you to make sure I'm meeting your needs.
So at this time, we'd like to invite our presiding judge, Ethan Feldman, up as long, along with Judge Huffine and our court administrator, Danielle Trujillo, to tell you a little bit more about the municipal court.
You know, kneeling would be just fine, really. And good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protown, council members. I am Ethan Feldman, the presiding judge. I've been the presiding judge since 2013. I'd like to introduce the deputy presiding judge, Loretta Huffine. You have a short bio, I think, in the materials we supplied. And of course, Danielle Trujillo, the engine that drives the whole organization, the court administrator. She's been with us about two years now, is it?
Yeah.
So I think, first of all, I would like to thank generically all of the city councils that we've had in the city since I've been here. I think the councils have fostered a culture that I think is symbolized by the courthouse itself. We have this magnificent courthouse up the hill, and of course, we see renderings of it all over the city on street signs and, and entry to the city signs. And it is symbolic of the culture of the city and the culture of the, of the court, and the culture of how the city approaches the court, too. I've had absolutely no interference from any city council person during the time I've been here. No one's asked about revenues, no one has asked about a case, and that's the way it should be, and I appreciate that. I've had discussions with council members. I remember one specific discussion, I don't know if you remember it, council member Valdez, but I remember where it took place, too, at the corner of Prince and Main. And it was about my, during my first year here, and you approached me and after our greetings, you said, "I want to make sure that we are providing for the needs of indigent defendants. Are we doing so? Do you need support in doing that?" And that stuck with me. I mean, obviously, I remember that from eight, eight years ago. And, and I think that kept, that's always been in the forefront, how do we treat all citizens in this city? So I do thank you for your support, and you've given us a lot of resources. Council has met our resources, we've had different challenges recently, as the whole city has. We've had, obviously, a different way of doing business because of COVID. It was always, everyone has to come into court, they have to sit until their case gets called. And now we've, we were initially in not much of a hybrid method at all, other than perhaps people without electronics, like homeless people, would come into court. But we started doing more and more cases, most of our cases, virtually. And we learned a lot from that. We learned that it is okay to do things in a different way, and the citizens appreciate it, especially the citizens who get traffic tickets. Now, it's hard to use appreciation and a traffic ticket in the same sentence, but in that context, though, I have to say that we always get feedback from citizens saying, thank goodness they didn't have to come into court, not only because of sitting around, but also because, because of the traveling, because of the COVID danger. And, you know, we, we do get back to everyone in as quick a time as we can, and people appreciate that they can go about their business and they can be doing other things while they're waiting for a call. Now, we're not sure what they're always doing when we call them, but, but we do call them, and we get a lot of cases resolved. We're back to having more people come in, but we still offer, in most cases, the opportunity for people to come in or appear virtually. And again, council has given us a lot of resources. We've needed more resources, especially in the personnel arena, and council has given us a couple more positions that are really going to help us. Council supported us with a new software court management system, which we're still learning. It's, it's a different way of doing business. Our old system, though, was, it couldn't be fixed. If something broke down, that was it. We had to find a workaround that would be awkward. But now we have a, a really good system, and we learn from it every day. And, you know, Judge Huffine and Judge, Judge.
She's been promoted.
I'm the presiding judge, and Judge Huffine's the deputy presiding judge, and Danielle's the court administrator, but we're actually a partnership, and we function that way. We all take responsibility for everything that has to be done to make the court go efficiently. Judge Huffine specifically takes care of the juvenile matters, but, but those things have to be addressed as a partnership also in how we fit them into everything else that we do. She's also taken on many other projects, such as revising simple things like our show cause procedure, which is outdated because there's been changes in the law, and we need to update things, forms, and, and actual step-by-step procedures that we take, and she's taken the initiative to, to work on that. Municipal courts have faced a lot of challenges recently. There's been a lot of legislation. There's been a lot of legislation, which is shortened timeframes that we have to accomplish certain things, most specifically with people in custody, that things have to be addressed much more quickly. And it's put a burden on us, but it's a burden we should accept because when people are in custody, they deserve to have their cases resolved as timely as they possibly can. But it's, it's caused us, uh, some, uh, some changes in how we do business in order to meet the needs or meet the, the mandates of the, of the legislation. There's also been a national phenomenon where a lot of municipalities have been accused of being, uh, used by their, their governing bodies as cash cows. This city has never been that way, at least since I've been around. And, uh, sure, we get revenue from traffic tickets and other tickets, but I've never had a council member ask me, "Why aren't we doing better than that?" I've never had the city manager ask me that. And I might add, the city manager also has been very good about respecting the independence of the municipal court. So we have had the challenges of, of being called, municipal courts in general being called puny munis. I hate that term, but it's, it's realistic. We see it, we hear it. And fortunately, the culture here is that we are not puny because the problems that the people who come before us have are not puny. I have people who come totally stressed out over a, a, a simple traffic accident where they backed up to some other car in King Supers. People tell me, "Oh, I've lost sleep just thinking about coming to court on this." So that's important to them. It's important to the people who get arrested for shoplifting. It's a, it's important to the, obviously, to the people who, who are involved in domestic violence cases. Currently, our domestic violence cases are going to the state court system just because of the COVID. It was very difficult to logistically deal with prisoners. So, uh, at this time, I think I would simply say that, uh, I'd like to have Judge Huffine address a few things, juvenile, et cetera, from here.
Good evening. Very nice to meet all of you. So I'm Loretta Huffine, and about five years ago, Judge Feldman asked me to start a juvenile court for Littleton. And we had been handling juvenile cases, but not in just one courtroom. And so twice a month, juvenile cases are the only docket. And obviously, the advantage to that is continuity. You know, I actually get to know some of the families. And when, when Judge Feldman talked about things are important to the public, there's nothing more important to a parent than what's going to happen to their child when they go to court. So, um, it's really good to have a singular court to address that. During COVID, because we went remote, we also were able to accommodate families who previously might not have been able to send both parents to court or had to miss work and the child had to miss school. And now we have a system whereby everyone can be online, on the phone and talking to us back and forth, um, to resolve a case. And so that, I think that's been a real boon. And one of the things that we had to put on the back burner was the idea of a teen court, which may, may or may not be familiar with. But hopefully, down the road, we will be able to start moving in that direction, which involves getting the schools involved and having children in school who want to be part of a sentencing jury come to the court and actually get involved in the process with the juvenile cases. So that's pretty much all I have. Thank you.
Are there any questions anyone wants to ask?
You know, I would just jump in and say, I've had experience doing teen courts in both Lakewood and Arvada, and, you know, I always found it to be a really invaluable experience for a lot of, you know, yes, some of the teenagers who are getting into trouble, but also those who are just interested in, in the court system. And as well as, uh, just kind of listening in and being one of those decision makers for their peers. So I'm in full support of that program if we can never, uh, get it together.
That's where resources come into play.
Can I stand here?
Sure.
So you brought up the question of staffing and resources, and that's one of those huge asks that it does require, um, more resources in order to bring in new programming. And over COVID, the one thing we had to focus on was the resources that we currently had, switching to technology and delivering a new kind of level of customer service with hybrid virtual court. And so what it requires is more customer touchpoints, more interactions. And then on top of that, legislature passed that it was required that we have these new touchpoints in order to help people better understand the process, so that way they're more successful at court and meeting the requirements that they're sentenced to. That's all stuff that we've taken very seriously, and that's the kind of customer service that we want to provide and the user experience we want to provide. So that's been our main focus. And our asks last year for our budget, um, solely relied on delivering, delivering better customer service and then also being able to deliver a strategic plan and have metrics so we could come back and report. But we've done the workload analysis already with what our caseload looked like and the service delivery that we want to have. And so we know that it will require more staffing. And then to bring new programming in, that also requires that additional staffing as well. So those are all things that we focused on and we're excited about the strategic plan that we've worked on with the city attorney's office, the judges and myself and court staff in order to really think about the services that we want to provide and how we're meeting people where they're at, no matter why they're coming to the courthouse, whether it's a parking ticket, a traffic infraction, misdemeanor, code offenses, whatever that looks like for them. But that we're delivering the level of service and we're giving them a very valuable experience at the courthouse. It may not always be the experience that they wanted to have, right? But they actually know their rights and that they feel as though they walked out, um, with a positive experience. So if you ever have any questions, don't hesitate, um, like the city manager said, to reach out to us, come and visit us at court. We'd love to send you the link. You can watch virtual court anytime we're in session. Tuesdays and Wednesdays are great days for us. All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Councilmember Valdez?
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, Judge and, and, and judges and Danielle. I, I want to give kudos to our city manager, too, because our, our, our city attorney, I'm sorry, city attorney. He often keeps the, uh, the city council up to date on certain legislation that the state is dealing with that may affect not just the city, but as well as the court. So I, I, kudos to our city attorney. Thank you.
Mayor, I just might also add, you know, I think, you know, Danielle is relatively new as the court administrator, at least as a full-time administrator. With, you know, Judge Feldman's leadership here and conversations with city council, we've made some pretty significant, significant changes in municipal court. And I think our timing couldn't have been better in some ways. I'm sure that the staff, uh, over there at the court may question my comment here, but I think that having the people like Danielle in position during COVID, uh, I think was really to our advantage to be able to kind of move the organization to this electronic format. And again, you know, Judge Feldman just embraced all this change. I guess we didn't really have a lot of cho, a choice here, but just having their personalities, those people in place, I think is just a, a great testament of success here for our community.
All right. So now we'd like to take you on a little journey this evening. We've structured it this evening so that we can introduce each of your eight goals that are part of your 2021 and 2022 work plan. And then we'll take a break from that goal and introduce the department, have that department lead come forward, share a little bit about the department, um, address your question, councilmember Mar, as well as share some insights on 2022, where that overlaps with your council work plan and other strategic initiatives underway. So I get to introduce the first goal and get to say, "It's complete." So, good job. I know that everyone sitting on the dais and even those members that weren't able to stay for orientation this evening have played a big role in, in this overall community conversation. You may remember that, um, oftentimes this goal was referred to as envision Littleton. It became much more focused in the 2021 and 2022 work plan as the unified land use code. We love to, I wish that color, we both wish that were green instead of blue, but it is amazing, um, to be at the point of having a new unified land use code and a modern code from, an update from our 1976 code. Obviously, this was a giant lift for the organization with almost every department, well, it says here, all departments involved. And then you would, of course, know that, uh, those lead departments being community development, public works, city attorney's office, the city clerk. So it is, um, a really incredible accomplishment, and I'm glad I get to introduce the first one in it being complete. So now we have an opportunity for community developments director, Jennifer Henninger, to share a little bit about the department. And so I'll turn it over to Jennifer.
Hello, council. Is this one? Okay. I have like too much stuff going on here. So I am the community development department director. I have been in this role for approximately three years now. And in my time here, we have adopted the comprehensive plan, which is, I would say, kind of the guidebook, um, for our department and what we do. We kind of bring that com plan to life. We have adopted the ULUC. Woo-hoo! So that is very exciting that we've gotten to that point. And I am here to remind you that that ULUC, okay, who can tell me what ULUC means? Excellent. Good job. Give him some candy. So the ULUC is a le, living, breathing document. And since its adoption, we as staff are seeing that firsthand and, "Oh, there's a conflict here," or, "Oh, that's a really good question," or, "Yes, that is definitely something that we need to address." So we as staff have a great list going right now on the planning side as well as the building side of things that we're going to be bringing forward to you in February at your council, um, council retreat. So look forward to that and bringing that. So community development isn't just planning. We do have building and code enforcement as well. So I like to say that we have community in our name and we build it, foster it, enforce it and preserve it, um, in everything that we do. In terms of kind of your council goals, obviously, you'll see that community development is involved in quite a few of them, um, not just fiscal one, but also in downtown, also in innovative in, infrastructure, as we are trying to modernize the way we do permitting, the way we accept applications, the way we collect fees, the way we do our code enforcement with our C Click Fix program that we brought online. If any of you, I hope all of you have downloaded that app on your phone. And you can do that at any time from the comfort of anywhere to do that. But we're really involved in modernizing and have been working very closely, um, with Ashley and her group on everything, um, IT has to do with that. So in terms of, another thing that we do is a lot of consensus building. And the consensus building among departments, with council, with our community. So that is something I take very seriously. I would love to meet with you one-on-one to kind of hear what you're seeing around the city and what we can do in community development as well as the city to address any of those goals that you have. So we, our staff is focused on delivering your goals. We also have a lot of day-to-day things, um, that we do. So we try to balance all of that, um, among our 20 employees that are in community development. So we try to be as responsive as possible. I will say, sometimes it takes a couple days. I'm very sorry. But that is just everything that we have going on on our plate. So I think I'd like to end with, um, the fact that I'm getting over another cold, so sorry. The fact that community development, um, is a department that works really well with council as well as this amazing team that you have here. We are your team to get things done, um, and we are definitely better together. So if you have any questions, please let me know.
Any questions? Thanks.
And now I'd like to introduce the city clerk, Colleen Norton. She may be a familiar face for a few of you on the dais. So turn it over to Colleen.
Thanks, Kathleen. Colleen Norton, city clerk. And yes, most of you know me, have dealt with me either during elections. I've been working with Cherry now my entire time in the clerk's office, 10 years, two years as clerk and eight before as the deputy. As some of you may know, and those that don't, everything in the clerk's office, or the majority, is based in state statute, whether it's managing the city's records, uh, records retention, destruction, answering, um, open records requests. We administer all the liquor licensing and marijuana licensing for the city. We manage our legislative software for your council as well as our quasi judicial boards. We work closely with council on recruitment for those boards and commissions. I would like to mention the 41 vacant seats that we have. About 10 are actually vacant seats. And by that, I mean people have resigned or will be term limited in 2022. The others are people who will have terms up but aren't term limited yet. So their three-year term is up, but they still have some time. So most of those, let's hope, will be reapplying, some won't. We also, what am I missing? I had three things I was going to talk to you about. She's the hardest working woman in the city, I'm telling you. We have, the city clerk's office is even smaller than the city manager's office. We are two staff members. We are staffed as we always have been, but in my opinion, not as we should be. And so you will be hearing a request from my office, uh, in regards to ARPA funds for at least a part-time records clerk as we move towards using some technology partnering with Ashley and our IT staff, um, making some improvements to the retention software we currently use, Laserfish. There are some add-on components. We're finally building in, um, retention modules that have never been there before. I call Laserfish right now the box under the kitchen sink, like everything is in it. And if you know what you're looking for, you can find it, but none of it is tied to retention. And we do have a legal responsibility, oh, excuse me, a responsibility to retain things for an appropriate amount of time. Retaining them past that can create issues. So we've been working very closely with IT on that, and you will hear an ARPA request from this office. I think that's it. We are moving more towards electronic processes. The clerk's office has always been, by and large, a paper office. And in light of seeing the advances that a lot of our other departments have been able to make and being able to partner with community development, the happy accident that came out of ULUC is N Code Plus, which is our new online codification system. It means we codify our own code. We do not have a third party that does that anymore. It means that when you approve an ordinance on second reading that impacts the code, like you did tonight, that will be codified by my office after the legal notice is posted on Thursday, and it will become effective and live in our code the day it's effective. There will be no more pending three months, six months, nine months out. So happy to answer any questions you might have.
Don't see any, thanks.
Well, we will jump right into council goal two then. This is financial sustainability, and this goal has been on your council work plans since we started council work plans. In fact, our first objective here was to define the problem. So you'll see, you have five objectives here. One of them is complete, and those are your land use and fiscal health models out of the economic development department. This is where you'll see more information on use of the one-time funds such as ARPA or CARES. It's also where you'll see cost of service studies, fee studies, revenue diversity. And with this one, I'd like to introduce Tiffany Hooton, our finance director. We'll tell you a little bit more about her department.
Good evening, council. I am Tiffany Hooton. I'm the finance director. And I have been in this role for about four and a half years now, but I have And I have been in this role for about four and a half years now, but I have been with the city for over 18 years. So I've seen the city change a lot over 18 years. We've gone through some ups and downs. We've gone through recessions. And I have to say, with 3A passing, that is probably the most terrific thing that, from a financial perspective, that we could do for our community. So I am excited for this next year, just planning, understanding what we're going to use the money for, and moving forward. So we've got a lot of positive build going forward. But I just kind of wanted to talk about the Finance Department in general. You know, we are both internal and external providing department. Externally, we provide utility billing to sewer and storm drainage customers. A lot of people may not understand or know that we partially own with the City of Inglewood 50% of the sewer plant, and we not only service Littleton customers, but we also service, I believe it's about 18 districts outside of Littleton. So while we may have about 14,000 households in Littleton, you know, we have about 55,000 customers in total. And we currently bill one time a year for our sewer and storm drainage. However, if you recall or remember, we went through a cost-of-service study recently on our sewer and storm drainage utility fund. And one of the outcomes of that was to look at how often we're billing, how we're billing. And we'll be bringing a lot of information forward over the next year to council related to that. Another one of the largest things that Finance works on, both internally and externally, is the budget. The budget is probably the number-one document that the city prepares and provides throughout the year. It kind of, it guides all of our decision-making. It provides information to the community and to council on what we're doing with our funds. It talks about how we are strategizing and prioritizing those needs through the community and the organization itself. It involves everybody in the organization. No one is immune to the budget. We have several meetings during the year, both internally and with council. A lot of discussions, a lot of emotions, a lot of information that we share amongst each other so that we can help develop that budget that the City Manager brings forward every year. Another important document we prepare is a comprehensive annual financial report. We're required by state law to have an annual audit, and the result of that is the comprehensive annual financial report. And so every year, we go through two stents with our auditors. They come, I see, they come to the office. Now it's virtually. But we work with them in January and December, and then again in April. And they thoroughly go through all of our information, our internal controls, and then they provide a report to council on the results of that audit annually. A couple of other things that we do, sales tax. So sales tax is our largest revenue for the city. It's not always that way with other cities. Some people are reliant on property tax, but in Littleton, it's sales tax. So we are about 79% sales tax-driven for our total revenues for our general fund. And with that, the majority of that comes from our retail sector. And so we watch and we manage the sectors by location and also by the type of industry that they're in. And retail is by far largest. As far as location, out of city and out of state is the largest. So a lot of companies that don't reside in Colorado are selling to Littleton residents, and so they're required to collect and remit that sales tax to Littleton. An exciting thing that we did over the last couple of years was we revised our definitions for sales tax so that we could help businesses understand what is different about Littleton than other cities. But we also wanted to have some similar definitions, standard definitions. And so a majority of the municipalities throughout Colorado have been working on standardizing these definitions to help businesses. The other thing that we did as a result of the Wayfair decision is we've been working really closely with the state, and we are now part of the SUTS program with the state. And so businesses have the ability to remit Littleton sales tax to the state rather than remitting directly to us. And because we're a home role, that is why we require businesses to remit directly to us. If we were a statutory city, all of our sales tax collections would go to the state, and then they would trickle down to us. So we did join the SUTS system. So it does allow businesses, One Avenue, to remit all tax throughout the state of Colorado at one point of entry, rather than having to remit to 45 different municipalities in the state of Colorado. So it definitely is providing a much easier way for businesses to remit sales tax. Another part of our sales tax program is auditing. Auditing is not a word that people really like to hear, but unfortunately, we do have to audit businesses. We audit all sizes of businesses. We audit both internally. We have an in-house auditor who works directly with businesses locally and throughout the state. And then we also contract with a company that helps coordinate larger audits that typically involve multiple cities, and they really manage those larger ones for us. But we do sales tax audits during the year, and we always have probably about, I don't know, at least 15 to 20, kind of in the hopper, I call it, that we're looking at. We also offer a program that many may not know. It's Senior Refunds Program. So depending on if you own your home or if you lease or rent your home, you can apply through the city for a rebate of your property taxes that you have paid. There's certain criteria, it's for people over 65, I believe. But we do start that program the end of March, and it ends in October. And I'm really excited to say that we've been working with the IT department and our library and trying to provide some additional information on that program to seniors, giving them an opportunity to learn about the program, understand the application. We're going to do it online. So we're really excited about partnering with the library on helping get some of that information to our seniors this year. I think with that, I will just open it up if you have any questions. And certainly, you know, there's a lot of information related to finances in the city. And certainly, reach out to me. I'd be happy to sit down, and we can go over anything if you want to review the 250-page document. Happy to do that with you, point you to any certain page, any information that you're looking for. But yeah, does anyone have any questions?
Does not look so.
Mr. Mayor, I might add here that you'll, as a new council member, you'll quickly learn that all things go through finance. So I think it's to your advantage to take your budget book, look at it, and then try to meet with Tiffany here as time permits. One of the greatest responsibilities any council has is the approval of a budget. And our process is pretty intense. Staff starts it in May, and by the time, you know, we work through all this, the council's looking at it roughly in September, and you're adopting October. So it's a long process. And again, we're all trying to align it with the council goals. And so that conversation when the council reviews is just that. We're trying to reassure that what is being proposed is lining up with your goals. So it's a big responsibility. And again, understanding kind of the mechanics behind a budget, because many times municipal budgeting and accounting is a little confusing to people who are not used to it. It's just different. You know, we have fund balances, and it's not like we have to have a balanced budget, but we carry surplus over multiple years on purpose and spend that down because we're looking at the long term. So that's the general fund, that's our utilities. And so again, that's something that I would encourage you to talk to Tiffany about. Maybe the other thing I'd comment is, you know, at the direction of council over the last several years, they wanted us to kind of comb through the budget and make sure that, you know, we're taking advantage of the opportunities that we can. Impact fees is something that came up here in the last few years, is making sure that new development, that growth pays its way. And so we've updated those impact fees here of recent time. In fact, we'll have a little more conversation around that, certainly during the retreat. But it's one of those issues that we've tried to update. When you hear the word "cost-of-service study," you know, we haven't really done many of those here, so we're trying to understand when you provide service, whether it's in a sewer utility or the planning department, who are the people and systems that are involved in making sure that our fee recovery is something that comes close to 100%. Now, in many cases, depending on what the issue is, you know, the council may decide not to go to 100%, but in other cases, you want to make sure that's exactly what we're doing. Sewer utility is probably an example where you want to make sure we're recovering 100% of our costs. It's not being subsidized by the general fund or anything. So there's a lot involved in finance. So don't feel too intimidated. Just if you want to spend some time with Tiffany, please take advantage of that.
Yeah, a question for Tiffany real quick. Actually, how's the priority-based budget going here? How are you feeling about that process after four years?
You were here whenever we implemented that, weren't you? I don't know if you remember, but I was so supportive and so excited about that program, and I still am. There is still...
But that's good.
There is still a lot that we can do with that, and we certainly have been talking a lot internally about that. We've got a new budget analyst that's coming on board next week, actually, that we're going to be working with him on continuing the PBB program. You know, COVID kind of put things a little backwards a little bit on the PBB, but it did allow us to make some really good decisions when we knew we had to cut the budget in 2020, knowing that our revenues weren't coming in like we had anticipated or anyone had anticipated. So at least we had that to kind of help us go through, you know, what are some of the things that weren't priority? What did we need to reduce? What did we need to change? But I am still so supportive and excited for that program. I just know that there is a lot that we can do with it, and we are still going forward with it.
That's good to hear. Thanks.
Anything else? Thank you. Okay, we're back to council goals. So council goal three, innovative infrastructure. And really, this is that commitment to ongoing maintenance and assessment. You know, in many ways, this innovative infrastructure piece, the city is playing catch-up on some work. And so it really allows us through this goal to think very creatively about how technology or other new methods can help us leapfrog maybe a decade or two. So it is a very comprehensive goal in terms of the departments that are involved here in the city, but Finance, Public Works, City Manager's Office, Information Technology, all lead departments for Goal Three. So now we'll have an opportunity to introduce another department, Information Technology Department. So I'd like to introduce Administrative Services Director, Ashley Bolton. I know, everyone needs a walk-up song.
I'm the Sam Man.
Well, we'll work on a walk-up song for all members.
There was a request for council member to have walk-up songs, so.
Well, good evening, Council. I'm Ashley Bolton, Admin Services and IT Director here at the city. I'll talk a little bit about information technology, my primary department. I actually started as the IT Director about three years ago Thanksgiving and took on a new responsibility last summer as the Admin Services Director. And then I'd like to talk a little bit more about the goal itself and how we're actually working to try to implement this goal, which I am super, super passionate and excited about. But within IT, we actually probably do the typical IT functions that you guys are used to. We fix computers, we help with issues in a typical help desk, but we've really tried to take things further. We are passionate about customer service. Being a back-office, behind-the-scenes department, our job is really here to make all of our colleagues and departments successful. And so we take partnership and collaboration with our partners to really try to make them implement things that ultimately will make our community successful, and we take that very seriously. So we have brought new functions and capabilities to IT, including, along with Keith, who also brought project management to the city, bringing a new project manager in, our first one, actually, who really has helped us drive things forward in terms of bringing projects to completion on time, on budget. We've also brought a business analysis function, which has now segued into a bit of data analysis, too, where we really, again, work with the departments to understand what their needs are and can translate those into technology that can help support them to actually meet their needs. So another thing we're super excited about, as well as rebranding our help desk, actually, as our customer success team. I think you got to meet some of them with training, and I know council members, Valdez and all of them have had experience with our IT department over the years. But working with them to actually truly bring productivity and efficiency gains, to council included. I think the innovative infrastructure goal is really one that, again, I am so excited that made it to your list of priorities. And that was really, I think, started even before the pandemic, that we recognized we really have to do things differently. We can't approach problems the same way we always have. I think you're hearing from a lot of my department colleagues that there are definitely our resource needs. I have my own in IT as well. But knowing that, we also have to look at innovative ways. Adding more resources aren't going to solve all of our problems. We have to look at technology. We have to look at innovation and ways of continuing to improve our processes to actually tackle these problems if we're going to be successful. The other key word in addition to innovation in that goal is obviously infrastructure. I think traditionally, at least in the public sector, infrastructure has really been all the things in Keith's world. So basically, our streets and our roads and, you know, Keith worked on the transportation master plan, the fiber master plan, our facilities master plan. You'll see all of those called out in the work plan. And I think it's very telling that you'll also see that the US Treasury has also now started to include technology and cybersecurity as actually under that infrastructure umbrella. So we have a cybersecurity goal right now there, and you'll be continuing to see additional work plan items that we add over the course of the next year. And you're also going to hear about things that aren't necessarily on the work plan. So I wanted to talk a little bit about Administrative Services, and that really was a strategic idea that Mark had. I'm sorry that this mask is causing me to... I have trouble breathing here. But in any event, actually, a strategic alliance where we actually combined our IT, our HR, our finance departments, as well as created our first-ever procurement division. And the four of us, our departments, really are working together to try to bring innovations and efficiencies, again, to all of our departments so that they can ultimately better serve you and our community. And I wanted to introduce you to an acronym that you're going to be hearing a lot more about, and that's ERP. That stands for Enterprise Resource Planning. And in the world of technology, really what that means is that's a suite of applications that enterprises, organizations like ourselves, use to truly plan the resources needed to achieve all of our goals. And that really combines, if you think about it, our financial applications, you know, the applications we use for payroll, for doing our general ledger, for paying our bills, as well as our human resources applications, how we do our talent management, our compensation, our learning management, how we manage career progressions, all of those things, our benefits. What we also don't have here at the city, which you may not know, is we don't have a procurement system right now. So that really hinders how we can manage our spend and do some of our transactions to pay our vendors efficiently and effectively. We also don't have here a planning and budgeting system. Right now, Tiffany will share a little bit. We do really everything on spreadsheets, and the manual intensive work that that requires of all of our department directors and their staff year over year, not to mention just the likelihood of risk due to errors, calculation problems, et cetera. We've gotten big enough that we really need a system to actually manage our budget and planning. So ERP is something we'll be talking a lot more about coming in January. Just wanted to plant the seed with you on that. Also, it will bring a lot of integration, automation, and data analysis and reporting. You hear how important data-driven decisions are for us here, and we have made significant progress in terms of the data that we have been collecting. Unfortunately, we still spend a lot of time manually aggregating that data, validating that data, because it's all manual on spreadsheets. And so really trying to leverage technology and innovation to provide more accurate data, timely data, ways for you guys to slice and dice your data so that we can spend time not on gathering and validating, but analyzing and making decisions so that we can do the best things, again, for our community. Let me see here. I think honestly, I really have covered... Oh, the last thing I did want to talk about was around just collaboration and productivity tools. You won't find anything called out, again, on our work plan, but we really used those CARES Act funds last year to try to bring more collaboration and productivity tools to allow our workforce to be remote if they needed to, to provide Zoom rooms. We created 21 around the city to allow for hybrid meetings. And I love the comments that the judge was sharing with you in terms of feedback that he was getting in terms of the options that we were able to provide our citizens. I've gotten some similar feedback. I just wanted to share one piece. One of our senior citizens, who also happens to be blind, also is losing his hearing as he's getting older. And I was talking one day, actually, on feedback around our omnibus services, and he mentioned to me, actually, you know, I do miss meeting people. I like the socialization aspect. But he said, having options, being able to attend a meeting virtually, he said, I risk my life every single day I walk out the door. I could get hit by a car. And so thinking about two of these options in terms of accessing... And so thinking about two of these options in terms of accessibility for our community and making sure that you're aware that these things that we're trying to do, again, are being great things, again, that are providing options and accessibility. And the last piece I wanted to talk about with that accessibility was just a new project that we're also going to be adding to our work plan in 2022. And that's partnering with Kelly Nardi and her team on the communicator, on our new website. And so basically revitalizing that website, bringing more digital services to our community members so that, again, we can transact in different ways. We can bring more benefits to our community members and give them options for how they interact with us. So with that said, I think I'm done.
Thanks. I'm glad you bridged up accessibility, because while it shouldn't be innovative, it kind of is not how we have been doing things. So it's great for the website and for our our physical infrastructure, too. So that's a good thing to have. So. Any more questions for, yeah, Kelly?
I don't have any questions or comments. I'm so excited for the new website. Do you know when it might be up and running?
So we are working on, we selected a new provider and are working through the contract process right now. If we can get this character over here to actually help us sign that. We're hoping to kick off the project in January. And one other thing I do want to mention to you, I've noticed that even our new council members have all signed in to know before, which is our cybersecurity awareness training. So I wanted to thank you in advance for your participation on that. We switched last year to a new monthly cybersecurity training where we ask everybody. Actually, we don't ask, we mandate it. Thank you, city manager, for helping us mandate that. But we have realized that, again, the best thing that we can do is provide education and awareness to our employees and not only council, but also our boards and commissions members. And so ask you to to take that training. And I do have to share that I even got feedback from Councilman Valdez that he enjoyed the cybersecurity videos more than Keith Reister videos. So I take that as a win.
I will, I will second that. I was skeptical when I did my, got my computer. They said it's very interesting. People actually look forward to these. And I go, and I've gone to these. No one looks forward to these. I have to say, they are, they are interesting.
And I'm happy to say we've got a second season of The Inside Man coming in 2022.
Oh, it's good. Yeah, I was going to actually ask you if I could have access to all of them, so I can show my, my ten-year-old son.
Yes, you can get caught up. Absolutely.
You would enjoy that.
There's actually a season three, so we're, they're going to keep going. So more to look forward to. Unfortunately, we don't let you binge watch. We give it two doses, but.
I will say, because of the cybersecurity training, I have not opened an attachment in probably probably a year and a half, because I think it's a trick from IT, because they'll actually send out kind of fake spoofing type things to see if we fall for it. And then if you do.
I did see that phishing when I said, it still says zero out of three for me, so I haven't gotten one.
I'm just saying, if you do, they'll make you take training again. Now, I, I heard that from someone else.
Exactly. It's a rumor. It's a rumor.
So don't send me an attachment.
We, we do do routine phishing tests as well, just to, again, test our vigilance and awareness. And absolutely, if anybody, I mean, it's all about learning. And so there is no negative effects or anything if you do get sent. I think some of our directors can even say, yes, we've been caught. It's all meant to be helpful and knowing the end goal again is to keep our, our city safe.
I've actually started deleting emails, too, because I'm not sure if they're actually the person sending it to me. So don't send me emails either. Call me. Come by.
And he's not a cat.
You know, council, one of the things that, you know, I might just add is you know, when I, when I got here, we didn't even have GIS. And I remember talking to Ashley originally and offering her, you know, the position. I had to warn her. I said that we have a lot of antiquated systems here. And so don't be too overwhelmed by it. You're just going to have to prioritize and start knocking them off. And I think if you truly have an interest in technology, I think you should take Ashley to lunch and visit with her about where we've been in the last few years. It is quite remarkable on the change that has occurred from a technology standpoint. And it's not, as she's mentioned before, she's kind of maybe the lead, but almost every single department director's been involved with, with Ashley and IT and trying to strategize about how to maximize the opportunities. One of the things, the changes that I'm most grateful is that we decided to make the switch from Google to Microsoft Outlook right before COVID. And I just, I just feel we're blessed to have made that decision.
Sometimes luck, luck is on our side, as Mark says.
If we had still to work with Google during COVID, I'm like, I don't even know what that would have been like. But, you know, I couldn't be more, more proud of Ashley and her team and all the department directors on the advancement we've made in technology. It is, and it's all about the customer service to our community. Yes, there is this internal efficiency piece. We always look for that. But we're always looking for the, the ability for our community to access information from us and be much more efficient. So the webpage, I know Kelly's been, she's been hitting me up for the last several years wanting to do that. But we finally got into a position where, you know, it just all came together in time and certainly the council's support and funding that. So a lot of great things going on in technology.
Yeah, I would say that Ms. Hooton is no longer using an apicus any longer. That's right.
She has one, though. Just in case.
That's just for entertainment purposes only there.
Happy to talk more anytime, even about, I think we're going to be also coming to you in 2022 to talk more about procurement and all the strategic sourcing and innovations that we're trying to do in the procurement area as well. But ultimately, thanks for your time.
Thanks.
Mark, I want to comment on the procurement issue, because that's something that I brought up many years ago, just before, just as you came in. And it's taken a while to get it going, but you've been working on it, I know, for a couple of years. So I really appreciate your getting to that point.
Yeah, I appreciate that comment. You got to meet Dave Emms, our purchasing manager. You talk about a guy who's got a passion for purchasing. This is the guy. And I mean, his depth of knowledge and his experience and his suggestions about how to, you know, maximize the opportunities. We just have never had that before. And so I think we'll look for the opportunity to bring Dave Emms into a meeting sometime.
There we go. Moving back to your council goals, our next goal is downtown goal four. Some of you may have noticed we have a downtown. We've recently completed our historic district on this, so you'll see two of our three objectives are complete here. I think it's fair to say, moving forward, partnerships is going to be a large focus of this goal as we work towards what this looks like in the future. As with most of our goals, all of our departments are involved in one way or another. However, some of our lead departments in this are community development, economic development, and public works. And I'd like to introduce probably the newest leader that you'll meet today, Cindy Perry, who is our economic development manager. And she's going to tell you a little bit more about the economic development department.
Good evening, mayor and members of the council. I'm Cindy Perry. I'm the new economic development manager. And since I'm new with the city, I thought I'd give you kind of the Cliff's Notes version of my background. I have about 20 years of public sector experience, working in both city and county, economic development, working on economic development initiatives, public works initiatives, and citywide communications. I'm really excited to be here with you to work on Littleton's economic development initiatives. So economic development means a lot of things to a lot of different people. Depends on who you're talking to. So generally speaking, in one sentence, the economic development department focuses on programs to enhance the city's tax base. And for Littleton, we'll do this in ways that are consistent with the city's unique character. Our goal will be to create revenue diversity by having a balanced economic base, which can help offset market fluctuations, and by promoting Littleton's unique character through place making, which is a people-centered approach to planning and design of public spaces. So we typically achieve these goals through development of programs and services that create an environment that helps to get business really excited about Littleton, so that they choose to locate here, stay and grow here. We also work, will work with the communications team to develop strategies that draw visitors to Littleton for shopping, services, entertainment, recreation, and arts. And like most cities, during the past couple of years, you've heard a lot about COVID. Economic development here and elsewhere was focused on COVID business response and recovery. But with the adoption of the new comprehensive plan and the ULUC, now is a great time to reboot more traditional economic development activities. And I use air quotes because the reality is we don't really know what the impact of COVID is going to be on development practices. You know, we don't know what's going to happen to office space. We don't know how retail and service models might change with secondary markets like Littleton having more daytime activity. Transportation may change. The supply chain issue, is it a blip or is it a long-term issue? If it's a long-term issue, what can we do to get in front of it? So these are some of the questions that we're asking. But we just don't know yet. But we should be very observant of any shift so that we can stay out in front. So looking forward to next year, you know, I think I'm three and a half weeks in here. There are several short-term priorities that will inform our longer-term economic development strategy, which is targeted for 2023. First, we talked about staffing. I need to rebuild my team. I'm a team of me right now, so that's going to be a priority for me. Luckily, we already have this budgeted, so this is nothing that's going to come before you. Secondly, we're going to be working very hard to nurture existing relationships, build new ones, and then work on strengthening our economic development infrastructure. So that means working with our chamber partners, businesses across the city, residents, the development community at large, downtown partners, and our regional and state partners to reestablish Littleton as a leader and to identify place making strategies that set us not only apart, but out in front. Adoption of the comprehensive plan and ULUC serve as a launchpad for our economic development infrastructure. Predictable land use decisions and an efficient entitlement and permitting process is one of the most effective, yet least talked about, economic tools that a city has. So we have a very good story to tell. We'll also need to look at long-term economic development financing tools. We're hearing a lot about that tonight, like a DDA or, or other options. I'll also be focusing on sourcing data, a common theme tonight, to ensure consistent and data-driven decisions and messaging. So while my gut might tell me what Littleton's strategic advantages are, because I said so isn't going to be helpful in that situation. So we'll work to understand our business mix in relation to those strategic advantages and to what's happening in the region. However, you know, I want to note that without an annual business license program, that might be a little more difficult, but we'll work through that. So ultimately, we would use that information to craft our unique story and to identify opportunity areas to focus our outreach with the investment and development community. And equally important, this information may tell us where we might be missing something. So I guess in conclusion, you know, these shorter-term efforts are going to inform that longer-term strategy and will provide specific attraction and retention tactics, like campaigns, programs, services, and investments that align with target sectors. And that's going to be based on the data that we, we determine throughout the next year. And this is obviously all with the goal of establishing the city's fiscal health or stabilizing the city's fiscal health and helping to improve quality of life overall. So I am open to any questions.
Thank you, mayor. Welcome, first of all. Economics, economic development is a, is a passion of mine, and I'm so glad that the city manager, again, he, he knows where I feel on, where I am on this. I know the previous council with Kelly Milliman, there was part of it, too, but we really wanted to get this department going again. But not to put any pressure on you, but the previous development department that we had was nationally recognized. So that's what you got to work with now. Get his back.
No pressure.
Get his back there. No pressure at all, Cindy.
You got it. You got it.
All right, welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you. I just want to pause. We've been going for about an hour and a half here in this. Does anyone need to take a break? Or should we, I see a few head nods out there. Want to take a break? Let's take a five-minute break here, and we'll be, keep going. We'll be back at 8:58. Goal five here?
All right, so goal five, arts, culture, and tourism. As you know, the 2019 comprehensive plan identified the heart chapter and began the work on a Littleton Arts and Culture Commission. So goal five is really in recognition of that, tying back to the Arts and Culture Commission's strategic plan. It also involves the digital transformation that we talked about a little bit under goal number three with our new website, as well as that critical tie to tourism and economic development. So now we'll switch over and have an opportunity for Cultural and Media Services Director Kelly Nardi to share a little bit about marketing and communications.
Good evening, Council. I'm Kelly Nardi. I'm the Director of Cultural and Media Services. I want to give you a little bit of background. In 2020, due to COVID, there were reductions in staffing, and the city manager needed to reorganize the leadership team. And what he created was from 14 departments down to six, I kind of call them the mega departments. That's when Cultural and Media Services was born. That was in November of last year. That is the combination of Bemis Public Library, the Littleton Museum, and the Department of Communications. We got to work real quickly. Tim, Nancy, myself, and Kathy Weaver, who is the Deputy Director of Communications, and we developed a work plan for 2021 and 2022. And I'd like to ask Tim to hand out a copy of this for you. This work plan contains 18 goals, eight of which have already been accomplished, which I feel very good about in light of the challenges that COVID presented to us. Other items on that work plan, as you'll note, are going to require further conversation with city council. I've been talking to the city manager last week. I believe we'll try to get those items before you sometime in January of this year. The staffing issue for Bemis Library and the museum are the two biggest issues that we're facing. I'd like to just give you a little background about the Department of Communications. We have five full-time employees and two part-time employees. And then we have one shared employee, that's Felicia, that shared between the museum, library, and communications. And she handles all of our financials, budget, purchasing, accounts payable and receivable. The other department members are Kathy Weaver, who is our webmaster, as you talked about earlier. She's in charge of the mothership, littletongov.org. And we do look forward to partnering with the IT department this coming year to rebuilding the littletongov.org site. But Kathy also manages four other websites. We have Tyler. I think everybody knows Tyler. Tyler's our senior media producer, engineer. Hiring Tyler was probably the best move I made of my career. When I saw he worked at the Geek Squad in college, I knew he was the guy for our department. Tyler's responsible for the televised coverage of this body, as well as five other council-appointed bodies that I'm sure you're aware, Planning Commission, Licensing Authority, et cetera. We also run a 24/7, 365 cable television channel. So if you have Comcast, you live in Littleton, you get Channel 8. This meeting is televised live there, as well as in other places such as Facebook. Tyler also is very creative and helps us to make a lot of creative videos for the city, as well as some internal videos that we've done. We recently did a project with the police department to create an overview of the Littleton Police Department for its Kalia recertification. Then we have Sherri Pullman. She's our digital media strategist. She creates a good deal of the content for the five different social media channels that the city runs, as well as creating a lot of content for the Littleton Report. She does a great job. We have more than 40,000 people follow the city of Littleton on one or more of our five social media platforms. Elizabeth Schofield is our Senior Marketing and Events Manager. Elizabeth does such a great job. Those of you that were at the Candlelight Walk last week know what a terrific event that was. I, I'm going to say in my time here, that was the biggest crowd I've ever seen at the Candlelight Walk. I think it's partly because it was such a warm night, but each and every year, Elizabeth makes that event more special than the year before by adding additional floats or different types of entertainment. But besides that, there's the Littleton Criterium, the Little Jam Concerts, your Board and Commission Dinner. And Elizabeth also works on marketing and tourism for us. And that's another thing that we want to talk to you about coming up in the first quarter, is we did create a Visit Littleton brand, and that happened right during the pandemic. And the next phase would be to deploy a Visit Littleton website that would be completely focused on tourism. When you go to Jamaica, you don't go to the Jamaican government's website, you go to a Jamaica tourism website. So we want to create a website that's devoted to tourism. And then last but not least, we have Creative Services, which used to be the print shop, but we have two part-time employees there, and they create beautiful graphics. Everything, pretty much that you see that comes out of the city of Littleton, with any design element to it, comes out of that department. We outsource about 30% of the jobs in Creative Services, but they do all the design for everything from the Littleton Calendar and Annual Report, which just came out, to the Littleton Report. And they do big posters for public hearing, for rezoning and liquor licenses, and the budget book, and the CAFR, and everything in between. So that's a pretty good summary of the Communications Department. And I'm going to turn it over now to Nancy. And then Tim's going to present on the museum. And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. So thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I'm Nancy Trim, Bemis Library Director. I've been in this role for just a little bit over a year, but at Bemis for nearly five years now. So first of all, I hope you all have library cards and happy to get you one if you don't. So our department is made up of five divisions. Technical Services, that's the division that receives processes, processes and catalogs, all of the material that we get in. This year, we reorganized and formed a Youth Services Division, combining children's and teen. So that, the work of that division is to provide the kids and teen program, collection development, and public service. The Adult Services Division provides all of our senior and adult programs, manages our adult collection, as well as all of our digital collections, including eBooks, e-audio, our research databases. And they also provide the senior outreach that we do to homebound individuals and assisted living facilities. Our circulation department, that's probably one of the most public-facing divisions. They're the ones you see right at the front door. They check in and out materials, fulfill your holds, and shelve your materials. We also have the LIRC, the Littleton Immigrant Resource Center, providing legal and ESL. That is to be sunsetted in this 2020 budget year. So our, just like to share with you the five major initiatives or goals that we adopted this year. First, we foster an informed community. We do that by providing reference and information services to our community. We also support career building through resume writing, online job application. We host life skills attainment. We have a career online high school program in which you can get a high school diploma if you're a Littleton citizen through the library. A major part of our services is providing impactful programming to all ages in our community, from birth to seniors. We also provide a welcoming space. The public library is one of the few places that you can go and just be without having to pay for anything. So we provide a space that we hope is inviting and welcoming and flexible to meet the needs of our community. We provide study rooms, we provide a meeting room, a conference room, that community members can reserve free of charge. One thing, of course, that we're passionate about is inclusive access to all of our services and our materials, both print and digital. And we protect the freedom to read and access to information. That's crucial to what we do as a public library. And then lastly, we believe in strong community partnerships that help us enhance our services and our outreach. We make use of community volunteers for a lot of the work that we do. And then we also have a really important partnership with our Friends of the Library and Museum, who provide financial support and sweat equity to us to help us do what we do. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. All right, thank you.
And then I'd like to introduce Museum Director Tim Nims.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Tim Nims. I'm the Museum Director. This is my 20th year with the city, which largely means that Councilmember Valdez has been complaining about listening to me talk for a long time. Nice to see you. Nice to see you, Jerry. So I'm sure all of you are fairly familiar with the Littleton Museum, but just to give you kind of a quick overview, we have 39 acres sitting in some beautiful parkland right across the street from the library, so a beautiful cultural campus. We have 30 buildings, historically recreated, and then, of course, what I think is the best building in the city, our Fine Museum. 2020 was our 50th anniversary. I will tell you that a pandemic year is not a great time to celebrate a milestone birthday, but it was nonetheless, and we're very proud of the longstanding record of community support that we have within, within our Littleton community. The museum is one of 750 museums accredited by the American Alliance of Museums, and we're one of about 200 museums that are affiliated with the Smithsonian Institution. We were the first museum in Colorado to have that designation. So professionally, we're, I think you can be very proud of the job that the museum does. We draw about 150,000 visitors per year, which makes us the best-attended mid-sized museum in Colorado also. We have five divisions in the museum. Administration, which is largely the front desk, custodial, facilities, and our administration staff, general administration staff. Collections, which manages our 65,000 objects in our collection. And that is everything from the first water wagon the city of Littleton ever owned, down to 6,000 photographs in our historic picture collection. Our Exhibits Division is responsible for developing, installing, and presenting exhibitions to the community. This past year, we did six, which I think is kind of amazing considering all of the issues we had with COVID. We were also able to do five in 2020 when we were largely presenting them virtually. So that was also kind of a quick pivot from in-person to virtual that the team was able to do. And then finally, our Education and Interpretation Division is responsible for managing our two living history farms, 1860s and 1890s, which presents Littleton as it appeared in those two snapshot eras. Also, a lot of the programming that we provide to K-12 education, largely here in, with our Littleton School Districts, but also kind of a 100-mile radius around the metro area, so up and down the I-25 corridor, into the mountains, and out onto the eastern plains. We also do a full schedule of special events every year. Many of those, as Nancy mentioned, are sponsored by our Friends of the Library and Museum Organization, a standalone 501(c)(3) that we literally could not do what we do without. So we're very grateful to them. We're charged with working with two of the city council's appointed boards and commissions, the Arts and Culture Commission, one of our newest commissions, which you'll be hearing more about, as Kelly mentioned, in the near future, as they work through their strategic plan that council blessed last year, and the Fine Arts Board, which is charged with public art in our community. We have, at this point, we are still at about 80% of our staffing. We have a headcount of about 20 employees, and we're about one down from the headcount. But because museums also are often run largely on part-time staffers, most of what we're seeing are hours that have been reduced for our staff, which translates to hours of service reduced to our community. So that will be our top priority as we come before you early in 2022, getting back to 100% with those numbers. Councilmember Barr, I appreciate your question about capacity and the ability to move on. One of the things that we learned through COVID was that we will need to go back to our in-person programming. We've done that. But you can't leave behind the virtual component, which was what we pivoted to in 2020 and was enormously popular and well-received with our community. So what we're finding now is where our capacity limits are. So we've already identified 2.25 FTEs that will be requesting from city council as we go into the budget process, or perhaps a little earlier if we have some ARPA opportunities. But those will be primarily targeted towards those programming expansions. They are all, I will tell you, frontline staff members, either frontline directly working with the public or working on exhibits for the installation piece, which is always really critical and very time-consuming. So I think that is everything I've got for the overview. I think all any of the three of us would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thanks. Anyone have any questions?
I just have a quick comment. I just want to say thank you to you, Tim, and to you, Nancy. You know, at the beginning of this COVID pandemic, when Mark, the city manager, had to make some pretty tough decisions with regards to the budget, both of your, the library and the museum took a hit from staffing. And I know it was incredibly hard and difficult, and that meant less services to our community members as well, but I think between the both of you, your leadership, maintaining the morale and keeping it one step forward, I really appreciate your leadership during this difficult time, so.
You know, Councilmember, I think I would add on to that. I think that's spot on. I think Library and Museum took probably the lion's share of the hit here when we were talking about staffing reductions. And I think I, my intent is to come here in that, oh, third week of January, roughly, I can't remember the date, to talk, to start talking to council about how do we bring the service back in the library and museum. Again, with the outcome of 3A, we know that we have more flexibility financially here, both in existing sales tax and ARPA funds. So I think that conversation would be a good primer as the council goes into the retreat and talks more details about goals and objectives. So, you know, there's amazing stories out of those two departments on how they managed, you know, some pretty dire times. When you reduce the staff by, you know, those, that amount, organizations remember that for quite a while. But credit to them for being able to kind of just deal with reality and do the best they can with, you know, virtual and other kinds of opportunities for our community. They really do need to be congratulated for the level of effort they've done here in the last 18 months.
With that, we'll move into Council Goal Six, Housing and Livability. This is one of council's newer goals. Currently, there are two objectives here that focus on housing affordability and attainability. This is where we see items like your Tri-Cities Homeless Action Plan, as well as the Housing Task Force work that's currently going on. While the lead departments for the objectives are city manager While the lead departments for the objectives are City Manager's Office and Community Development, there really are a lot of other departments supporting this goal, Public Works, Littleton Police Department, Bemis Library, just to name a few. With that, I'd like to provide an opportunity for Chief of Police Doug Stevens to tell us a little bit more about his department.
I heard the groaning from the back. How much time you got, Chief? They gave me 35 minutes, so I should be fine. Yeah. So they said keep it short, so we're the police and we do police stuff. Are there any questions? So I've, congratulations to you guys for getting on council. Welcome back. Nice to see you again. I'm Doug Stevens, Chief of Police here. Everybody, I think, have had an opportunity with all of you to talk about the department and our size and what we do and kind of what we have. Our priority is moving into, well, coming out of the pandemic, hopefully, get out of this thing. We didn't have the opportunity really to go remote or do anything. We had to provide the essential services, as did a lot of the other parts of the city, like Public Works, but our folks that were able to go remote did, and the ones that couldn't didn't, and we got through. And we've had support throughout the entire time from council and the community, and we're very thankful for that. We've weathered it pretty well. Two different little waves of folks getting sick, but luckily, we're getting folks back now and we're doing okay. But it taught us some few lessons, and they kind of go into what we're talking about moving forward. Just like everybody else in the city, we've learned how to adapt quickly, and we've got a big crash course in emergency management, which is, you know, somewhere where it's kind of this big thing that no one really understands unless you're an emergency manager, and then nobody understands what an emergency manager is saying anyway. So, but we all got into it, we all worked through it, and we worked collaboratively with all the different departments in the city, but then also across jurisdictions, and got us through. So we were always able to provide the essential safety services for our community, no matter how bad things got in the city or in the metro area, so we're very thankful for that. Moving forward into 2022, some of our priorities are, and I've talked with all of you about this, but we're very fortunate in Littleton to have a police department that is, just receives tremendous support from our community. And it allows our officers to have the confidence and the ability to go out there and do what they need to do to keep our community safe. That trust and that support has been built through years of work that the officers have done. One of our priorities moving forward, though, is there's a new, if you haven't noticed, maybe in the media, our profession has taken a little bit of a hit over the last couple of years. So one of the new expectations, more than anything, especially for Littleton, because we've always just relied on that one-on-one type relationship, that service, the presentation of service type relationship we've built, is now that the immediacy of transparency, transparent look into our operations, what we have going on. So our biggest priority right now is to develop a program, implement a program where we can get information out to the community and give them a transparent look into our organization. And by that, we're talking about getting a public information program running, up and running, that's specific to the police department, with a robust social media presence, with the ability to communicate immediately, not only during emergency situations, but our police department, our community's got some incredibly good stories to tell and no way to tell them. So I think it would just be very beneficial for us to build upon that relationship we've had with the community for so long and not jeopardize it by just kind of being in the dark, keeping people in the dark, by getting information out there immediately and regularly, I think will be very beneficial. So you'll be hearing from us about a PIO request coming up. Another challenge that we faced has been the legislative mandates that...
Public Information Officer.
It's a personal assistant for the chief. No, it's a public information officer, so, or public information specialist. It'll be a civilian that we want to do this job for us and to manage our program moving forward. The other thing that we've been trying to navigate over the last couple of years, and thanks to Reed and his staff, especially Ashley Augustin, has been the legislative changes that have come for our profession, one of which you'll be seeing, and I think we have some of it budgeted, but not all of it, is the mandatory implementation of a body worn video program. We've always been a supporter of body worn video. I think it provides the transparency that we were talking about before, and I think it helps our officers tremendously in their jobs as well. And with the new technology, it also adds some incredible officer safety pieces to it, like GPS tracking on our officers, the ability to live feed the cameras, so that we can look at them live if we need to in an emergency situation. So those things are great, but there have been some issues, you know, obviously with long-term funding for data storage and those types of things, pretty expensive. And then also some legal issues to be worked out, and we've been patient, and Littleton community's been patient in allowing other agencies to do that real hard work, and then we'll just steal what they do, the good stuff, and implement it here. But we have amended to implement our program by July 1 of 2023. Our goal is to get it up and running this summer. We're actually starting a pilot program this month where we'll have some cameras on the street on some of our personnel. So we have a whole program moving forward on that. And then also, the other thing that is listed as one of our goals for 2022 is to enhance our ability, again, to build on lessons we've learned during this pandemic on emergency management. What capabilities does our city have? What lessons do we learn that we can continue forward with? And how can we be better prepared to take on the next thing, whatever that's going to be, and work together as a team, and what tools will we need? And we'll talk more about that, too, with the availability of funding and ARPA. Those are the, kind of the needs, and then there's the opportunities. And I've talked to some of you about the opportunities. Couple of the programs we're really proud of, and are not unique to Littleton, but our co-responder program, where our officers partner with mental health professionals, and they're with us in the car, out on the street, their ability to provide immediate access to critical services for folks experiencing mental health crises, and also a lot of other folks, not necessarily mental health issues, but maybe homeless issues and that, our co-responders are very, very helpful with that. So that program is an opportunity where we, with additional staffing or funding, not just on our side, but on all health, is our partner side, we may be able to expand that program and provide more service. Other services that we provide now that we're very proud of is our SRO program. We have six full-time officers assigned to Littleton Public Schools, so we have a police officer full-time in every middle school and high school in Littleton, which is kind of interesting when you saw some of the negativity and you saw a lot of municipalities, larger municipalities, pulling school resource officers out of the schools. They viewed it as a negative. We were contacted immediately by Littleton Public Schools and said, "Don't you dare take the officers out of our schools." So, and it's not about copying the school and enforcing things, it's about the relationships that we build with young people, and those relationships can make a huge difference. They build trust with the students, and the students give them information that sometimes is very helpful and could save a life, like there's a lot of suicide interventions that occur because of information that's shared with our school resource officers. And then obviously, there's a safety component. With some of the tragedies we've experienced around our jurisdiction here, obviously, we want officers to be there, and so do they, and it's a great partnership that we have. So I think that's probably it. The other opportunities I was going to talk about real quick is, as we move forward, and I don't know what the timeline would be, but I've talked to Mark about this, and I've talked to others about this, we operate a lot of our things that we do, like we're responsible for parking management, responsible for animal control. We have one person doing each of those jobs. So there's no relief factor in there. So if someone gets sick or injured or selfishly takes a vacation, then we have no animal control, animal management, we have no parking management. These are things you guys hear about quite frequently, especially parking, but, you know, things like that. So those are opportunities for expansion of service to our community. Those are real-world issues, quality of life issues, they're not the emergency stuff that we have to do no matter what, but they are the things where we can do a little bit better and provide better service for our communities. So we may be talking about those things in the future, just not sure on the timeline, given all the priorities that we have going on in the city. Yeah, I wasn't going to bring up the RV, but it's part of the emergency management piece is, I don't know how or what the funding would look like. I think we have an option with ARPA to replace, one of the things that we've talked about and other folks have talked about is deferral, right? So we've deferred a lot of expenses, we've deferred a lot of things, especially with fleet or with infrastructure, you know, over the years, because we saw the funding, you know, doing this track. Over the last several years, we saw the funding doing this track. With 3A, luckily, we're able to, you know, kind of dig a little bit out of that hole. So one of the things that's been deferred for the citywide, not just the police department, but our fleet replacement, and Mark's talked about it a lot, and someone was talking about the fire department leaving earlier, was it maybe Paul? But now I have to stand up here and ask for the big-ticket truck, right? So I hated it, because they would come in and ask for, you know, $2 million for a truck, and I'd be like, "Yeah," and laugh at them, and now here I am. So our city needs a new mobile command post, and we'll be talking about that, too, but it's about a million-dollar expense, so. But it can double as a nice, you know, RV on the weekends, maybe we'll VRBO it, I don't know. But anyway, so that's one of the other things that we may be talking about with ARPA or whatever type of funding opportunities that we have. So any questions for me?
Thank you. Chief, I know there's a lot of turnover in some jurisdictions. How are we doing? How many vacant positions we have right now?
So thank you for bringing that up. We did take a hit. So over the last 18 months, so I've been chief here eight years. It took me seven years to get us to full staffing, just because of regular attrition, and we started pretty deep in the hole. We got there for about seven minutes, and then COVID hit, and then as part of the budget corrections for COVID, there was an early retirement program offered for the city, so several of our folks, a couple of our folks, jumped on that. Those are some unexpected losses. Then we had a few people over the last two years just left the profession, and these are good people, some supervisors. We had some real up-and-coming leaders with five, six, seven, eight, 10 years on the job that just don't want to be cops anymore. They just gave it up, which is sad. So that hit us pretty hard, too. So about, I would say, within the last year, we were down, we have 80 sworn personnel, we were down 12 at one time, which is awful, awful. So through hard work and through the ability to be supported again by all of you and HR and finance and everybody that helps us do what we do, we've been able to get back to full staffing, knock on wood. So I'm counting the four that graduated from the academy Thursday night, so we're pretty excited about that. We're going to be putting two more in the academy in January, and those are, well, one of them will be a pipeline officer, which means, and you guys have always supported this, a pipeline means it takes about a year from the time we get an application in until we get an officer ready to go out there on the street on their own. So about six, seven months of academy training plus four months of on-the-street training and the recruitment process and screening process. So having those pipeline officers above our budgeted strength, basically, allows us to kind of address that gap, should we have an attrition or someone leave that we didn't really expect. So we've been pretty fortunate as far as that's kind of evened out now. And I got to tell you, and I've said this a lot, if you don't want to be a cop in Littleton, that's pretty bad, because this is the best place ever to be a police officer based on the support that we get. When things are really bad, you know, and Aurora's getting beat up, and Denver's getting beat up, we get food. So food just comes in from the community, and we get fat, but it's great, we feel the love. So, but we're back up there to full staffing in our sworn personnel. Some of the other things that, you know, if we talk about opportunities and expansion, you know, one of the things I talked about, I think, with some of you guys, too, when you were talking about your campaigns and what the city priorities were, was, you know, homelessness, obviously, is a big issue all over the country, but, you know, Littleton's really seeing an increase like everybody else in the metro. You guys hear about it a lot, we hear about it a lot. We do participate, like Sam was saying, in the Tri-Cities Homelessness Policy Group, and when there's an action plan for that, but I feel like the police department could provide more. I think we could do more when it comes to homelessness. I think Inglewood has a pretty good model, where they have officers assigned to their proactive units that are specifically designated to be homeless liaisons or work with the groups to be more specialized, and then you have that single point of contact. I think that's more efficient and effective. We don't have that capacity right now, capability, but, you know, it's another thing we could talk about as we move forward.
So the answer to my question was, you have no vacancies?
Yeah. It's fluid. Yes.
It's fluid. Asking you a question is always dangerous. It's kind of like asking Reed a question. He'll go on and on and eventually get to the answer, but...
So right now, we have people in training that I don't count as ready, you know, so we don't have, you know, our set is our proactive unit, our special enforcement team, it's not staffed. We have a sergeant right now, we have four spots on there that should be proactive officers. These are officers that I like to see, that I want to see on bicycles, I want to see them in the ATV, I want to see them on the trails, foot patrols downtown, you know, and then also they have the capacity, if we have a spike in burglaries or a pattern auto theft or a drug house, these are the folks we can put on that to really concentrate on it with, along with investigators. We don't have that right now. Those are the folks that we had to pull to work regular patrol while we're short. So with these folks in training, once they're done with their training and they all make it through, three or four months from now, we'll begin staffing those proactive units back again.
I should have used the hook before the RV came up.
Yeah, I was done. You asked questions. Yeah.
Chief, thanks for everything that you and your department do. I can't say enough about your department.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Well, just under his 35 minutes there, so.
You did it. 27. Thanks, Chief.
Okay, and now's an opportunity to preview Goal Seven, Environmental Stewardship. This is the newest of council's goals in their 2021-2022 work plan. This first came to city council in September of 2021 and included an inventory of programs and services. This goal is under development in 2022. And now is my opportunity to introduce Public Works Director Keith Reister and share a little bit more about the department and efforts underway.
I don't have a meeting till like 9:00 AM tomorrow, so we got plenty of time. So, you know, the simplest way to describe Public Works, Keith Reister, Public Works Director, Public Works and Utilities Director, is if it's out in the community and it doesn't have a gun or a fire hose attached to it, generally, we take care of it. That goes for facilities, fleet, streets, sewers, stormwater, all of those things throughout the community. And historically here, one of the good things about being in Public Works is the work that we do is going to be here a long time. We just started last week the replacement of the Rio Grande Bridge, which is the oldest one in the city, and it was installed in 1928. And so the work that we do today is, I know sometime down the road, my successors are going to be like, "Oh, my Lord, what the heck were they thinking when they made that decision?" So, you know, that's just the way of the business, but the good part is we're building that infrastructure for the community, and, you know, we're on a big upward swing. Over the last few years, we've been able to build asset management platforms to inform both council and the community about what we have, the condition it's in, and the risk it's at, and what it's going to cost us to maintain and build on that infrastructure. We're still doing that process so that we can give you the most robust picture possible to make good decisions. In addition to that, one of the things that's most exciting for us about the 3A funding is, you know, between 2000 and 2015, from an outside standpoint, we only brought in a couple of million dollars worth of transportation grant money besides the gas tax. That number now, over the last few years, if you include our partnership projects, is over 30 million, but we need the local match for that, and that was the gap that we had prior to that. So with that in mind, the 3A money is going to allow us to take, in many cases, $1 from here and bring in four additional dollars from other sources outside to really help us with those big challenges, and that's a really exciting opportunity. How we're going to structure ourselves to make that happen over the next few years? That's a great question, and a big challenge for us as we work with council and your priorities to figure out what's important and how we support those in that mission going forward. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, not from the city attorney, though.
I don't see any questions for you. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
I think, as you can tell, staff is rather shocked at the brevity of Keith's presentation.
Well, that was seriously impressive. With that, we'll move to your last council goal of the night, but not least, and this is good governance. This has been in a few council work plans now, and the heart of this goal is really the organizational development work, so think mission, vision, and values. But not only that, this contains the regular updates of city codes, so your ULUC updates as we continue working through that process will be under here. This includes communication with the community, so items like elections, our resident business surveys, all of that is under this goal. And I'm going to introduce our HR Director, Noel Mink, who's going to tell you a little bit more about her team.
I'm feeling the pressure a little bit of being the last to go before people can I am feeling the pressure, a little bit of being the last to go before people can head out the door, feeling that pretty acutely. Anyway, I feel like I just need to take a second, because so many of you have talked about our awesome staff that we have here and our leaders, and you may or may not know, but we do an annual city manager awards, it's our third year doing it. Our employees nominate each other, and I just want to highlight that Samma, Nancy, Keith, and Jen were all nominated by staff as leader for the year. And so what you see when they come to you is what our staff is seeing also. I mean, it's always really meaningful if a city manager says, you're a great leader, but when your staff says you're a great leader, that's really something. So I just thought I would share that as all of you were talking about our leadership. All right, here we go. So in some of your handouts, you see the areas that HR works on, careers, employee benefits, organizational development, which includes everything from our mission, vision, values, to how to better use Excel, how to supervise, philosophy of leadership, volunteer opportunities, our talent acquisition, workers' comp, employee relations. And so if anyone's had a job, they're pretty familiar with the work of HR. And so as this opportunity came along to share something about our department, you know, I could really talk about things that you probably experienced yourself as you've been in the workforce, but I think what's most important about our HR team is how we're getting the work done. So there's a lot of things that can be said about HR, sometimes we get a bad rap. There's, on TikTok, if you're ever on social media, this one creator said, he did a whole series, why HR is not your friend? And that really hurt my feelings, I didn't appreciate that. But he did a whole series on that, and that's kind of what it is, this feeling that HR is a branch of the organization only here to protect the organization. That is certainly a way that HR can manage their department, certainly a way that a city manager can say, HR, manage the people. But this HR department, Littleton, we built it differently, and that's really through the support of council, city manager, and my coworkers, my colleagues. We have an opportunity here to put our employees first, and that's kind of our philosophy of putting employees first. I would agree with everyone that HR is here to support our organization, support the mission of individual departments, mitigate risk, and make the best use of the budget that's provided to us through all of those different ways, safety committees to reduce workers' comp, looking at the facts and data in the market around salaries. That's all of our job. But what I think that we do differently here, and what you'll see from me, is that we're putting employees first, their perspective, what will help us, just like you're putting citizens first before other things. We're a community of people. And so when we do that, when employees are feeling safe and valued, when they have meaningful work and they can be authentic, and they can bring problems to leadership and it's resolved without retaliation, it leads to high performance and engagement, and it mitigates risk. You know, employees who are engaged in this way, if they are walking and they saw a pail of water by a stairwell, an engaged employee says, this is my building and someone could be hurt, let me move the risk, and then let me let facilities know, let me let the safety committee know. Employees who are disengaged, they leave it. So our engaged employees, we have a culture that they feel invested in our organization, all this discretionary time becomes beneficial for the organization. When we have employees who are engaged and they're finding meaningful work, they're not documenting about their supervisors and they're not filing lawsuits, they're working to solve problems, and it's really, really helpful. Just today, I received an email from an employee, and I'm just going to quote it. It says, "My sincere thanks to you and your team. I have never worked for an organization but take such good care of our employees." And I think that really is saying something to how we're choosing to strategically run the operations of HR. You know, a lot of times, HR can be referred to as like really cold and unfeeling, or like, oh, just hug me. So it says balance all the time. And in our HR department, here, we say things like, the grass is greener where we water it, so how can we water our assets, our people, better, more efficiently? How can we have better strategies? How can we work within the confines of the law to still be innovative? And those are the things that we focus in on. A little trifold here, this beautiful design done by our graphics department. You'll see through the mission, vision, values process, these are our values within the HR department, and you see things like be credible, so use facts, use data, use things that people can trust, that they can talk about, that they can research themselves, be transparent about those things, make it simple, have strategies, build relationships, put people first, and that's the manner in which we're doing the everyday HR work. I think that when we look at the different areas that we have that we support, when we bring this to it, we end up with a different result. And I think that hopefully, my colleagues would tell you, that we're also looking always at the long picture, what is the mission and how can we help meet it? And so that's what we're trying to do in HR and what we're trying to accomplish, and always appreciate your support. If you ever wanted to spend some time with me, I don't get those requests very often, but you'll see me like shoot through the roof, like, oh, I love it, it'd be great. But if there's any questions, I'd be happy to take it. All right, silence is golden.
Thank you.
You know, Mayor, I think I would add that we have come a long ways when it comes to the culture of this organization compared to when I first got here, and it's people like Noel that have made the difference. And, you know, I couldn't be more proud of her and her staff and the changes that have occurred. You know, I've had employees come up to me and just, you know, thank me for just taking the interest in employees and the culture of the organization. And that, to me, is why I'm in this business, is for things like that. So I really have to congratulate them on what they've been able to do. So I was just listening to all that and reflecting on the news here recently, where a CEO of some organization had a Zoom meeting and he fired 900 employees on a Zoom call. So contrast that kind of culture against what Noel just described, we have something special here.
Okay, so with that, it concludes council orientation for this evening.
Thank you. Anyone else have any other questions or anything? Well, the city manager, I know you had your update at the beginning, do you have any other update for council?
Nope, no other details there.
All right, I see the city attorney hitting his unmute there, I'm afraid to ask him, does he have an update?
No, thank you, Mayor.
All right, well, we'll see everyone next week for a special meeting in the executive session. Great, thank you, we're adjourned.